Yeah.
It's unbelievable.
All right.
All right. Welcome, everybody. We have been active with the bridge opening and ribbon cutting, but we will continue here as we normally do, starting a bit earlier with the Pledge of Allegiance as we're going to do some normal discussion before we get into our normal meeting with the budget. So we'll do that now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And as per usual, Dave Emily, Chad Slock, Lord.
Marlo Harris.
And John Clark.
And we are joined by our town assistant town administrator here. And as per usual, I know our current audience public does not have a problem with this, but we observe school rules for stuff in case anybody else comes in. That being said, do we have any particular announcements? Though we'll probably re-announce them again at 6:30 in case other people come in. So the announcement-
Then we're going to be closed for Thanksgiving. So we're going to be closed Thanksgiving Day and Black Friday. And then I'm going to be on vacation next week. So the office is going to have limited administrative hours.
Okay. I will also add, while we haven't had more than a couple little flurries show up as of yet, it is now that time when the winter parking ban is in effect. So don't be parking on the side of the road. You don't want to suddenly have some snow and your car plowed off the edge of the road. Orte, so that the plow can come. With that, unless there's other announcements to make, we have some unscheduled discussionary topics, one of which that I want to add into the agenda, which I was about to pull up so I could make a little bit more distinct way of doing this. But one of those things is going to be talking about the CPCNH or Community Power Coalition Refresh Policy. And one of the things that we need to do, I believe Russ has several topics from correspondence to bring up.
Yeah, we can go through them.
And John, I believe you said you had a couple things to mention as well.
If we have a couple.
So does anybody have any issue with adding those in? Okay. So why don't you go ahead with your callouts first while I pull up what we had for an agenda and then we'll go forward.
Well, I happened to be shopping today and picked up a copy of the Conca Monitor down in Tookie. And I see that Warner has a PBS series capturing small-town life. I didn't know if you folks knew about that. It looks pretty interesting. And I think it's neat that a community does that. And we don't have a downtown coffee shop. We don't have some of the things Warner does. But those are the kind of things that I think that makes small-town, small-community life very good. So I just want to give a thank you. Thank you to the folks in Warner. They're a great neighbor. We work with them very closely and kind of a nice thing to see. The other thing is, right underneath it, maybe some of you heard a week or so ago, the folks that own Rebelstoke Coffee, which is a very popular place then in Conca, had a theft and the owner, the young woman who owns the place, chased the thief down the road and didn't catch him, but got her money back. A great shout out to her for courage.
Absolutely.
And many other editorial comments I can make on that. These things need to be addressed and public safety needs to be visible. And it's sad she had to do that. But thank goodness she did it, didn't get injured. But you know, you've got to really look at people like that and say, "It's a lot of courage." So a call out to her, a very positive call out to her. Couple things on the Conca Monitor. Thanks.
Thank you. So our first old business would be the siding quote, which I believe we have some of our members of the Historical Society to help enlighten us to what's actually in this building and help give us some guidance there. So I don't know if you want to move forward to that or before we jump into others or-
No, that sounds good. Let's do this.
Come on down.
Yeah.
Do we really need to come on down?
Oh, why not? Hey, you listen, I don't smell today. Come on, Carol, ladies, young ladies. Oh, both of you, come on up.
It's a very short thing to say. I'm sure she can-
Oh, well, hey, always good to have support.
So anyway, I grew up in town and I could tell you that there was a fire in the town hall in the 50s, early 60s. Or the late, uh, Grange Hall, sorry, Grange Hall, which was-
Over here.
And bathrooms are up there into the ground. Anyway, that, to me, is one thing. That's just from my perspective, that this is all new. It's not the old Grange. So anyway, Dot Bork, I'm Albertus now. Dot Bork did investigate. And she looked into the Historic American Buildings Survey. And neither of the buildings was listed, not the church, not the Grange Hall. And there were only two listed in Webster, and that was the Meeting House and the Congregation Church. So the National Register of Historic Places also lists only those two. So that's something that she actually double-checked the other day, just to be sure. And like you said, both the Grange Hall and Anderson Memorial Church have been modified significantly. If you want confirmation one way or the other, perhaps someone could contact Jim Garvin. He's the person that knows the most about historic buildings in our state.
Architectural historian.
Yeah, he's one that was our guide for refurbishing the Meeting House.
I think, I'm just going to speak freely. I think we're just trying to honor what, in respect, the Historical Society and what their wishes were as we were in all here. We all know that times are changing, but we don't want to lose that look. But we also don't want to, you know, we're going to be aware of taxpayers' money. But at the same token, we want to give this- that's right, give this town hall a little bit. It needs a little refresher, even if it's a coat of paint or if it's siding or whatever. We also don't want to forget that. I mean, we did the heating system. I mean, sometimes where it sits would have been what I would have done, but it's not there. But it's there. We've got good heat, some AC in here now.
Great.
Yes, we can only do so much, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Yeah.
Basically, I was looking through the Secretary of the Interior's standards for the preservation of historic buildings. This building probably would not, never qualify as historic because it used to be this, it burned. That used to be a church. It was gutted to become town hall and it was put together with what's in the middle here, the library and all the rest. So it's not historic. It will be historic if we wait long enough, but-
Oh, yeah, everything will be, right? I agree with you there.
Yes, but at the moment it isn't. And even in the preservation standards, there's enough wiggle room in there that you could clad this building in just about anything you wanted as long as it kind of looks it.
That's right.
Yeah, it's not like, it's, the idea is preservation, if indeed we want to preserve this building as it currently looks. The idea is preservation and it doesn't mean that you only have to use the old standards for doing stuff. Some of the new standards would preserve it better. So there shouldn't be a problem with what you want to clad this building.
There is the problem of moisture.
Oh, there's some.
Right, right. And we've talked about that and we're making sure that we-
Because when we had the Meeting House project begin, first at the very beginning, Jim Garvin came every month and took moisture samples from each side of the building. And he, you know, he noted it on a graph and how it changed over the seasons. And so that was what prompted us to put that. Was it rubber or?
Oh, the vapor barrier.
The vapor barrier.
Crawlspace, yes.
Down in the crawlspace.
It kept water from coming up through the crawlspace, up through the floorboards and vaporizing out through the exterior, which was rotting the clavards, which is what appears to be here, even though there's no basement under here. So I, you know-
Under, something's going on.
Something's going on, yeah. But if it's rotting exterior, then-
To get-
Well, we have the basement. We don't have a crawlspace. We don't have dirt.
No, you've got a concrete slab, correct?
We've got an actual basement.
Yeah.
Well, down under, there is the-
There's a basement under that concrete slab?
Oh, no, no.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying. Yeah, yeah.
That's what I thought, yeah. I don't know if that could be causing it. I'm no architectural historian, but-
Something is.
Something is, yeah. So if you clad it with something that would resist that, it'd be better for the taxpayers.
Yeah, so right now, there are kind of three ways that you can look at it. The first is to kind of try to fix what's there with clavards and repaint after removing the bad paint that's there. And that would be the most in-kind way to address it. The, of course, it's just different wood in the same place. So they're not really changing anything. You're just moving along the timeline a little bit. The other two that have been mentioned is since the back already has standard vinyl siding on it, to just vinyl side the rest of the building. And then the other one is, well, the back maybe, but the portions that people see should maybe have something that looks like clavards, much like we currently have. So the look would stay similar or the same. But that wouldn't be a wood product. That would be the composite products that will last basically forever, even if you stick them underwater and so on. So those are kind of the different ways that we've thought about and looked at. But none of them have been a, "Hey, we should do it this way" definite type of thing. So we're definitely making sure that we hear feedback. One of the things we had temporarily settled on was that the front and down there, since they're the most visible, would be done that way. And then that side would match the back with standard vinyl siding. So it's a little bit less expensive than just doing all of the composite. But then we had somebody saying, "Well, that's the most historic portion because that was the closest thing to what's left of the Grange Hall. So maybe you should do that way and one that way." And then none of it is historic. So everything should just be the cheapest possible and go with vinyl everywhere. So we've heard all of the arguments. Anything you would like to weigh in on?
Nope. I'm glad it's your job to weigh all the options.
I think that's what we're hearing. So we appreciate you coming in because we want to do what the town wanted to have happen. We don't want to change something that was so dear to somebody's heart. But at the same token, I think now we know our direction. And I think that's, I really appreciate you coming in. I think it's great.
I just have a big question mark about why it's rotting. I mean, if you covered it with anything, is that going to continue? So wondering if you really need to get an answer for that.
The rot is happening there. We can't tell what's under the vinyl. Assume that's been fixed. But we're hearing from some of the folks who've been in town a long time that it's due to the trees out back. So part of the expense, and they're all pines and whatnot, so part of the expense would be working with the neighbor to hopefully take down some of those trees. And if we did-
Let some sun in.
Yeah, we'll let some sun in to dry it. And I think as you walk out back there, you'll see-
It's damp.
Yeah, what they mean by that.
But the front of the building looks bad. There are no pine trees out here.
But sometimes too, when sun hits something all day long like that too, where it gets a lot of sunlight, that can cause havoc too.
Well, it was the Meeting House. We took the entire side off the Meeting House and reclad the whole thing because all the moisture coming from the building was going out and the sun was beating on that side of the building. And that whole side had to be replaced. But it was moisture going through it, which makes me wonder about, I don't know.
So anytime that, like, clavards would be removed, whether it was for the composite clavards or whether it was for vinyl siding, you will be exposing the sheathing and the vapor barrier. Hopefully, there's a vapor barrier.
Right.
If there isn't, you'll need to put one on.
And so, once that happens, you know a lot more and you're already in the position to repair all of that sort of thing.
So set aside a little extra for that fudge factor.
Yeah.
When you open it up and you find out how much it's really going to cost.
So far, the things that we have, in order to get ballpark numbers of these things, which we won't share because we will be asking for quotes further. But in order to do that, we've made sure that they include at least repair of visible damage or damage that they know is there so that it is in the quote. But of course, you can't quote what you don't fully know.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, ladies. Appreciate it.
Good night.
And thank you for taking us first.
Thank you. I guess I will jump into the CPCNH portion before I forget it unless somebody wants something different. Short version. Community Power Coalition is continuing to recover from past events and do things appropriate to do that and then become fully competitive again. As part of that, one of the things that they're doing is starting up what are called refreshes. This won't affect Webster that much, even if we didn't do anything. But to explain what a refresh is, when, for example, in renting, a person is on Community Power, leaves and a new renter comes in and now it's a new person on the building, they don't get put on Community Power. They get put on unitile or evergreen, just depending on where in our town they are. And when periodically, there is a refresh that would normally happen, which would then put that person onto Community Power. Currently, the Community Power rates are not better than the utilities like they had been for a while. And so one of the things that I fought for along with a couple others and is now part of the new refresh policy, they had temporarily paused all refreshes because our rates weren't better at CPCNH. But now that they're going to start them up again, it is unless the towns say that they want to have a different policy for how to manage refreshes. Some of the towns are saying they want to do it every month, no matter what. Some of them are saying just whatever CPCNH decides. And some of them, like I would suggest that we do, say, "We're happy to be part of refreshes when CPCNH does them, provided the rate is better than the utility that the citizen is being refreshed from." Because as much as I think in the long run, and for people who have currently been on CPCNH, the benefits are there and the savings are there, it, to me, doesn't make sense to tell somebody, "You know, we're going to take you off of your utility power and put you on something that's more expensive", without them actively doing it. And so that is the short version of this. And so I will make a motion. If there is any further discussion or comment on it, feel free. But I would move that Webster inform CPCNH to do refreshes on the CPCNH's schedule, but only for Webster when the rate is better than utilities' rate.
A second.
I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And so when we have the minutes for that, Russ can-
Get a copy?
Get a copy over to CPCNH for us and that will take care of that. So we have made sure that we do not increase the prices on our residents more than they need. Okay, so-
We can go to another item if you want.
Yeah, you might as well go into anything else that you have.
Because we have the disabled vets credit.
Okay.
So that's something I wanted to talk to you about because we have to send a letter out to the disabled veterans, letting them know that they're losing $750 from the credit because it's state law changed, where it used to be allowed that you could stack the two credits, the disabled and the all-veteran. Now you can't. However, there's wiggle room with disabled veterans that we could put a Warren article on to raise the disabled veterans' credit to $2,750 so they'd have no loss of valid value, provided that it passed a town meeting.
I'd be favorable to that. David, what do you think?
Okay, so the problem right now is that they're stacking and then the-
Well, the stacking has been happening since before we even got here.
But so right now, they're stacking. Is that active through this year?
So it ends now. So it ends on April 1st. So the next tax year, if tax year goes April 1st, April 1st.
So it's for next tax year.
So it's for next tax year.
So we'd be picking up $750 per disabled veteran?
Because we're already paying for it.
Yeah, so right now, it's all disabled, sorry, all veterans plus an additional $750 for disabled veterans that stacks on top.
This would be no increased tax burden because we're already, we're slated to give them $10,750.
Okay, so that's part of the $750.
Right.
Okay, I didn't understand that. Okay.
So we would be getting more tax revenue if we didn't approve this. So it's not like we would be-
Yeah. So the only thing that I would say there is, based on the way that they keep changing laws in New Hampshire's State House, I would like to find a way to write the Warren article that such like if it becomes stacking again, that we readjust it at that time.
I don't know if we can do that.
Because, but also, are we able to do this? Because I know that at least for some of them, the values are also part of state statute.
No, they're not. With the veterans' credit, it's a flat rate. So they get, so with veterans' credit, you get $750 off of your tax bill. With the disabled veterans, you get $2,750 off of your tax bill. The one that's based off of value are the solar.
No, no, no. So, but right now, the, is the, the state law, I believe, had been written that it's $750 for one, $2,000 for the other.
No, that's not what the state law says.
No, okay.
Because the disabled veteran goes up all the way to $5,000 if the town adopts $5,000. The cap's $5,000 in state law.
Okay.
Which is why we have wiggle room to bring it up to $2,750 because we can only do what the state allows us to do.
Okay.
Which is not true for the elderly credit because I did look that up.
For, okay, so for the, I know if I looked at the MS-1, it would in theory tell me, but I don't have that in front of me. Do you know roughly how many disabled veterans we have in town?
About 10.
About 10. I am all for doing the change to allow that.
I just didn't want to send a letter out to people saying the board was going to do this until I knew the board was going to do this.
It's probably a good idea.
I also didn't want to send out the letters without the board saying they were going to do this because I'm going to get a lot of phone calls.
Seventy-five hundred, seventy-five more.
Well, it's not going to change anything for us because it's what we're already doing.
Which to me-
It's just in a different way.
Their dedication and their-
Absolutely.
Dedication to-
That's an easy decision.
I don't even, I don't even quor yet.
I mean, we don't have to worry about making a motion about it either because you're going to have to make a motion when you put the Warren articles on because it has to be a Warren article. That was basically that discussion.
Yeah, so I'm all in favor of having a consensus that you can send out a letter or a note with it that says, you know, the Select Board plans to have a Warren article that will rectify this for you.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay.
You second.
So there's our consensus. So Russ is good.
I second.
So that is another one here. Did you have further correspondence that you-
We have a lot of correspondence.
Actually, you know what? Before we jump in, while you get your correspondence ready.
I'm following the Dana.
I see that, the vanilla folders.
I wanted to briefly, well, sort of briefly-
Packets for you too.
Go into-
I didn't put them out because I hid them.
The sand and salt shed. And what I know and can put forth for you and-
And you might want to wait till Chris gets here for the sand and salt shed because I'm sure she'd be a great resource as well.
Well, so that's kind of where I was going is, and I think we want to actually invite a couple people, including Chris, to come fully prepared to speak about the history of the sand and salt shed and the committees.
And with that, to why-
But that's where I'm going and why I want to kind of go through. Because I did some of the research and-
We have a few planning members that-
If you don't mind, I would like to go through that at this point.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, and say, because there's planning board members. Are you going to say that already? Planning board members that are concerned.
Well, I'm, I'm not really going towards that specific, but I know the question has been, why or what says we should?
Spend the money as a, as a town.
Towards the new sand and salt shed.
Right.
Who says we have to do it, other than?
So that's kind of where I'm going.
You know what I'm saying?
So in 2006, Warren Article 15 established the new Highway Land and Building Capital Reserve Fund. And quote, "For the purpose of the purchase of land and/or construction of a building." The minutes say it passed, but there was no information in the minutes about a discussion or any further purpose. In 2007, Warren Article 9 contributed more to it and it passed with the minutes only saying that Chairman Hashem explained that this was the same as last year's request. 2008 added it as an individual warrant article for continuing to contribute to it. Passed, no additional information in the minutes. And in 2009, they started lumping it in with every other CRF for funding, just like we have been for the past many years. "The land behind the safety building was purchased by the Select Board just prior to me joining. I was on the planning board at the time and walked the borders during the subdivision of it to do so. It was explained and celebrated by Chris when she was the Chair of the Board, and I joined at the time of the debate for engineers versus our road agent designing and putting a road up to that new location. That was during COVID Zoom meetings with Chris, Bianca, and I as the newest member on the board. But eventually, after many meetings and discussions, it was decided that our road agent should be allowed to do the work of making a second access to the highway, which is now turned into the second driveway for the safety building, and the road up to the new sand and salt shed location. Through these many meetings and explanations given to me by prior staff and prior Select Board members, I was told the purpose of that vote, and that was to move the sand and salt shed and to have property for a future DPW as the town eventually grew or lost the ability to have a road agent. What I've taken and passed on, uh, from that is the conveyed intent, which was to move the sand and salt shed there. However, there has been doubt whether that should happen or not, uh, that has been expressed by several people. And I went back to try to find the information that said very clearly, this is what it should be. And I wish I could point to more detailed minutes of the creation of the fund or the future funding of it, as I wasn't there or here to remember those. But the minutes are all very vague, or don't say anything other than it passed. So, I would suggest that before anybody discusses ditching the project, or that we definitely move forward with a specific plan for the project, that we bring in Chris, the Chair that presided over the land purchase and the committee that searched for it, to go over and present those details, and to bring in any other committee members as she sees fit to do so. I believe we have a good opportunity to get this done in an appropriate manner, following DES rules and regulations and best practices to prevent salt contamination in the new construction and the new area, and to get ahead of any DES issues that might be found in the future with our existing setup. That has been discussed publicly by myself in the past at various meetings, uh, as the existing plan. However, it's often said and reminded that one board does not bind another. So, it is certainly possible for this board to decide and vote differently. So, that's basically where that is, and the information that I could dig out of, for example, town meeting minutes.
The quagmire, as you've said, is not that maybe, my words, maybe in the near future or the distant future, something get done. But when we're having the discussion the other night, zoning board, correct?
Planning.
Planning, excuse me. When we're having the planning board discussion the other night, nobody could point to, as you pointed out, any one sentence where it says DES, or anyone else has told us to do this, to include the committee that bought the land in substantiating the reasons why we need to do it, if that makes sense. You and I are saying the same thing. So, I just want to be, and you, you watch the tapes you, you get. I just want to be clear, nobody is for or anti, but given the amount of money we're spending on it, and so many other projects in town that we have, we could still allocate money for it, and, 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 but move on to some of the other projects. And, and much like I've said, and you've heard me say, what I've learned in my short eight months here, because I've still got a lot to learn, you two have been sitting here longer than me, is I like to listen to other people in the audience, because you learn and get educated. And one of the, one of the planning board members and one of the notable citizens in town said, "Have you ever considered the fact that when we have bad storms, which we do have, as we have today with the wind, the salt spray will go down onto the safety building, and now you'll have another problem?" You know, I never thought of it. And I'm not sure those committee members ever thought it. I'm not going to speak for them, obviously. They'll be here to talk to us, but I'm going to ask that question, because it sounds to me as that's a reasonable, good reason why we want to really rethink and think through what we're going to do. If that makes sense to you.
Yeah, that, that makes perfect sense to me. The, the thing I would say in that regard is, in my mind, that's more construct the right building in the appropriate ways so that you don't have wind blowing the sand and salt out into random places. But that is certainly something that needs to be, whether it's in the building phase or in the where should it go phase or something else, that is definitely one of the things that needs to be part of that discussion.
And I don't, I'm sorry, Mal.
No, no, go, because then I-
No, and I don't disagree with you. The building could be designed, so maybe that doesn't happen. But that is all the more reason, instead of sketches, we need to have an engineer part of this project who is knowledgeable, and, and, and that's going to take some more money down the road. So, I'm not seeing this as a tonight or this year, or maybe even next year. I'm seeing a gradual work toward doing it. And I don't want those people, since we are on video here, I don't want those people thinking I'm against the project. I'm like, I'm not against it, but I want it done right. I don't want it done half scale. I'll leave that to her, okay?
And I feel like some of this is, I was under the understanding, you know, when this came about, that it was, as we discussed, that that's what, I mean, I want to do what the townspeople want to do.
Right.
And then I have my own opinion.
I have my own opinion too.
So, so, and that's, as the three of us sit up here, that's always a fun balance. So, I look at sometimes a situation where something has been seeded where it's seeded, it's worked. Uh, one thing about this town is, at this point, we do not have a lot of town roads. And we have to be conscientious to what is, as I think Clark used the words, what is most appropriate for the time of spending money on certain things that don't need to happen, because there really isn't a problem. And maybe, maybe some of it is fix up the existing salt shed with some, you know, a roof or like a little addition for, you know, make sure that everything is being, not, nothing's being compromised down there before you go and compromise other property. And yes, construction wise, everybody, you know, we watch it every day in our lives as you see new bridges go through swamps, and you see roads go through, you know. Everybody else will be like, oh, my God, that's going through a swamp. You can't do that. Oh, yes, they do. We do. We have a bridge that's going to be replaced right up here that has had, over the river, that's had salt, you know, for years and years and years. And that's okay. It's not that, it's not that we shouldn't be, um, um, responsible and, and trying. It's just, let's make sure that we're not, sometimes a few people might have an idea of what they feel is best, and is it best to spend that, everybody's money?
Yeah, and, and one of the things that I'll say is, I, I did not quickly find minutes for the sand and salt shed committee. And, you know, why was this the particular plot of land? What was their recommendation going forward? I'm sure those things exist. I didn't quickly find them. I was mainly looking in town meeting minutes, like last, last night or the night before, uh, to try and find out, because like, if it was in a warrant article, that would be, yeah, that's exactly why this is here and what you should do, especially if there were minutes describing that discussion. And so, that's where I focused my attention. And I'm, I'm going to assume that there is some sort of recommendation coming out of the committee, but I didn't, I did not go and find those particular minutes. But again, that's, when we have Chris here, uh, we can not put her on the spot for them, but we can ask her to come back another time with them, so that we actually have all the real information in front of us.
Is she coming tonight?
Uh, I believe she's here for Conservation Commission for part of the budgeting.
So, to say it publicly, a Clarkism here, okay? I'm concerned, but I'm not committed, and I'll be very frank about that.
Yeah.
I, I just heard a lot the other night of good, solid Webster wisdom. And I mean that politely. I don't mean that to sound, you know, smart, smart, smart guy. I heard some good wisdom, and it kind of made me rethink just how quick we want to do this project without making sure, as I think we're both saying, maybe a little different way, all three of us, making sure we're doing the right project.
And, and what the town, if we need to do it, how the town would like to see it.
Wants to move.
And, and spend the money doing that.
Because there's a lot of other stuff to do, as I look around. It needs more attention, because it's more of a, more of a crisis than this is, you know?
So, so that's my overview, and again, hopefully, we, we can, uh, set up a time for more discussion with the committee chair and-
And I would, I, is it weird to, or is it, is it even okay to say or ask if we, if we were to move forward, we were to ask the town again, but make sure it's clear to what, 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 you know, and that's probably having some numbers together, which we don't quite have here, because we fully- But so that they realize what that, here's where we can spend the money, here's where we have to spend the money, or here's what we could spend the money on.
I think when we get to town meeting this year, due to the numbers of projects that came out the other night in the CIP, I think, again, not that we aren't, because I, I think everybody gets a pretty clear read from us every year. My first year, and all I would like to say is, like you, I want to have enough information out there so people can make sound, reasonable decisions. It's their money, and we're spending it for them. Again, my words, I'm concerned, but not committed. I think that can wait a while, but that's my opinion.
So, the, the way that I will, uh, kind of talk about both of those, those comments, the CIP committee, their primary job is to say, these are all the different projects. These are when we think things might make sense to do, but most importantly, how much it would be to do them. And so, how much each of the different funds are, should get. With that information, then, we kind of decide as a board how we want to fund them and how we want to present that at the budget hearing when we talk about the warrant articles. And things can change at that time. We can at the budget hearing say, you know, there's option A and option B, and take the input and then go to town meeting with it. The, the, to your point of the people should have the discussion of what they want to do, I would absolutely suggest that that not be just, you know, like lumped in with something else. Uh, but like, this is for finishing the sand and salt shed, these are the estimated prices sort of things. So, that's why we want to put this much into the fund. And that would be its own warrant article, so all of the discussion would happen for that particular project and whether it should or shouldn't happen at town meeting.
I'm be, be prepared for the positive and also the dissent in that someone might say, well, if we don't put that money in here, I've got six other places where we can put it where it makes sense. So, I mean, we need, we, we need to be, I think our taxpayers, or some of the people I was talking with tonight, our taxpayers are educated, and they, they understand what they want their dollars to go. And quite frankly, I, I, I must admit to you that I kind of jumped on the sleigh with this thing. But the more I think about it, and the more, the more discussion I've had with people in town who have been here longer than I have, and that's a pretty long time, but, uh, and are more educated in the building trades than I am, made some very good points to me, and I, I want to honor that knowledge, because I think we really need to consider that knowledge too. As I know you first, if you know what I'm saying.
And so, that's, again, one of those, like, we have that discussion at the budget hearing.
Pretty cold out there.
Well, I don't want to be depressed, but I thought he said-
Then we know what direction to bring to town meeting, and then the discussion happens again. So, we, we are very safe in making sure that-
I think we're very balanced.
We're going to know what, what people-
We're saying it different ways, but I'm just going to get myself some coffee.
Oh, it is still back there. I'll save on the coffee. I've had enough caffeine.
There's somebody pulling you in, so. Do you want to go over correspondence, or you're still on salt shed?
I think we've, uh, taken care of the sand, the sand shed, salt shed.
And we'll be free doing your research.
Other than we want to make sure that when Chris is here, that we actually request a time that she comes in specifically for covering that committee's work and recommendations.
I think our librarian may be showing up. Awesome.
Are you coming in the back door? I said, you coming in the back door? Why not, right?
No, we started the meeting a bit early, because, you know, the party was happening here. You couldn't even fit in this hall. There were so many people here.
It was good discussion.
First piece of correspondence, the tax rate breakdown. If anybody wants to see that.
On their phone. And I guess I should, uh, have the tax, uh, bills and stuff been printed so they'll show up online yet? And, uh, what, no, I can just go find that out.
The tax bill should already have gone out. They went out mon, today.
Let's look at that.
You signed the warrant, and we did not wait even a second.
I didn't think so, but last time I checked online, it wasn't there yet. And I don't want to tell people something that's not true. Ah, yes, there we go.
So, that's-
Yes, okay.
Just in case you wanted to look at the full breakdown.
So, for, uh, taxes, the taxes have gone out now, or are all gone out, or in the process of going?
They've all gone out.
Have all gone out now.
And I want to thank the volunteers that came in and helped Stephanie pull tax bills. Seven people came in, they were done folding bills in an hour.
Wow.
That's a record.
Very good.
That's awesome.
That way, we get them out quickly.
I love that, town volunteers.
It is awesome. No, we thank you.
So, that should show up in your mail shortly. Uh, if you want to know what it is or take care of it online before it does, you can go to our website and then click on the, uh, tax section at the top left button, and New Hampshire Tax Kiosk will show you all of that information for you specifically. To break down the tax rates, uh, the listed rates for this, uh, time for this year to end 2025, our total rate is sixteen eighty-eight. That is comprised of four ninety from the municipal, which went down, uh, from last year, one eighty-four from the county, nine from local education, and one fourteen from state education. For those in Pillsbury Lake, that is an additional one ten. And so, that is the breakdown of the taxes, and again, all of those bills were mailed out, and you can see it online if it hasn't arrived in your mailbox yet. If you don't get it in the next couple days, please let the tax collector know so they can get you another copy.
Want to keep going?
Sure.
So, the next one was from the New Hampshire DOT, saying payment number seven will be coming through for our reimbursement. And that's almost for nine hundred thousand dollars.
Yay.
And then we have a shoreland permit for our wetland dredge and fill permit. That's going to be happening on Lake Road. Actually, Two Nichols Road, to be exact. So, that's one of those things, we have to be notified. I've already sent a copy of the Conservation Commission, and the planning board's going to get a copy too. But if you want to look at it.
Is that, um, a resident, or is that like the state's doing this, or?
That's a resident, or a property owner, I should say.
So, so they filed that, and it goes in front of the state, but we really don't have a say.
We really don't have a say.
Okay. I was just going to say, what's the rest of the process?
What is the purpose of this?
It looks like they're-
What are they doing?
Looks like they're adjusting the screen, because it's causing a little too moisture in the back of the property. I briefly read over it.
Redirecting.
Redirecting. And we have a sidewalk report from-
I will leave comments for that.
For the bridge.
Straight for the Conservation Commission.
And they really, the sidewalk was great when I went on it. They was there with the engineers. They really couldn't find much wrong with the bridge, other than a couple small, minor things, like a screw not being fully screwed in, or some concrete dust that needed to be removed, and some equipment that needed cleaned up. The bridge engineer was finding it very difficult to find anything wrong with the bridge, and he stated as such, and then thanked the crew for doing such a really nice job.
One bridge we haven't been to replace, is what you're telling me.
That's right.
Sounds good to me.
Hopington has sent us the updated, well, it's not really updated, the new version of the slightly adjusted ambulance service agreement. She asked if the board was going to sign tonight. I'm like, no, I don't think so. I think you're going to want to look at it first before you make a decision.
Yeah, I want to look this over. Uh, I don't know how my colleagues feel about it, but I'm not signing it.
But I need three copies, so you can take them with you.
At this point, I mean, I will down the road, but I think we need a, a little bit more information this way.
Yeah, the, the thing I would say there is, especially after we met with them, and then also met with, uh, Warner, that many, who is also in, in part of this agreement, everybody realizes that this agreement is what has been out there, but we haven't signed, and isn't quite right, so everybody's talking about how to fix it and make it right. So, rather than trying to sign what exists, like, I'm okay using this to come up with numbers that we may owe them for the next year for budgeting purposes, but I don't think that we should just be signing it as a continually renewing agreement as is. I think that should be whatever the decided upon appropriate agreement is.
Well, I think it would be good to have how the amounts can be calculated every year when it comes to the ambulance, right there in the budget, or right there in the contract, so nobody gets surprised like we were this time.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is too basic for what, this is thirteen years old, seventeen years old, and all of it, it's too old. What I'm saying is, is that with everything, everything we're asking them to do, and we need to have them do it, you know, we've heard of all angles of that, but I agree with it. We need to have ambulance service, we need backup fire service, and the ambulance is primary, so, I'd like to see a little more detail and some numbers. Truly, we're going to have to, uh, kind of going to have to quest to the, uh, to the numbers.
Yeah, I, I think what's going to, like, I know that Warner's in the process of trying to negotiate and look at how that's going to be going forward, so I think we should, uh, work alongside them to come up with an agreement that all three of us sign together, as opposed to just signing an old one.
Well, let their town administrator know that you're going to look over the agreement with some suggestions, as you warned them to be in there.
As I've said, we'd like to sit down with, with her. Fire chief should be involved in that discussion. And talk about, uh, how we can update it, there's some liability things that need to be put in there for the safety of everybody, and, uh, and response items. You know, I, it's, that's not a big task. It's just something we want to collaboratively do, I think.
One of the other things that we have from Hopington, this is the next one, and this is the gate they talked about for the potential, and this is the quote that they said they were going to give you, that they were looking at for the price tag.
Is this for the land tax?
RFID.
Yeah.
There's no need for gate number, in my opinion.
It's, it's one of the things that will come up, uh, at some point when we start talking with them. Some of the people may not be on the board anymore that were fairly adamant about trying to do things like that. But it will definitely be something that comes up. So, knowing what it is and what the details and numbers are, uh, is good for us to have when they bring that discussion up.
If you've been down there on Saturday morning, if you would have put a gate in there, you'd have cars backed out of the main fellow, if you're going to land. What's the name of that road, those by the dump?
That East Pentagon?
Yeah, East Pentagon. Hey, you'd have cars backed down that, it stops there. I mean, it's, it's, there's better ways to handle this situation. Forty-one thousand dollars, you can hire a part-time person to chip window stickers and that's the one job, business effect. Not sounding-
Nope.
No, I just, you know.
Do we all have a copy of this, or?
I can email it to you.
Okay.
And I literally just got this, was putting the packets, putting this up right here.
I mean, that's an easy fix, but there's no other fix.
It says, "From the Warner, the member of the Select Board that came in on Wednesday of last week, he typed up the summary of thoughts and his afterthoughts, and he wanted me to give them to the board to review, and if you have any thoughts you'd like to contribute." and he wanted me to give them to the board to review, and if you have any thoughts you'd like to contribute, just pass them along to me and I'll do some."
Which gentleman was this, the gentleman sitting beside you?
This is Henry, the one with all the notes, remember, there was.
He was sitting beside you?
Uh, no, the one that was sitting next to Dave.
Yeah. Not the guy you know, we're talking downstairs.
So, and this is for the transfer station?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
This is for Warner, this is for.
My confusion.
I knew where you were going, because I'm like, yeah, you know that other guy.
Yeah, yeah.
So there are once again three copies of this.
Okay, well, it's nice of him to do that, I get it.
And the last piece of correspondence that we got was from the Manchester Veterans Council, and they were looking for a donation of two hundred dollars for a new veterans memorial that they want to put up. And they're dedicating it to Sergeant William John Tracy, which I think the bridge is dedicated to. And I think that's just it.
So, let me ask, because that sounds different to me, why, as much as I support and want to honor the veterans, why is Manchester asking us for money for?
I think this is, they're sending out their little fishers to see who they can get donations from.
Where is this, where is this?
I think it's going in Manchester.
It's Manchester Veterans Council is what's saying it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a hundred and fifty percent supporter of veterans, but it'd be like Berlin sending us something to go in Berlin, I mean. I don't know, I'm just.
No, you're not wrong.
To dedicate the monument, it says, it's saying weird.
That's what I was looking for when I was looking at it.
Does it get to do with this bridge up here, or is that?
I thought maybe it was for the bridge up here, because it was the same veteran.
That's Bill William Tracy Bridge, what, did you say John?
No, that's.
This is a John Coyne.
Because it's being dedicated, I think, to three.
Sergeant William John Tracy, saying we're talking one and the same, I think, right? US Army killed in action February twenty-five, two thousand and three, in Kuwait. That's not the same.
Yeah, that's not the same one.
Two thousand and three, yeah, no?
No.
Yeah, this is to install a commemorative granite paver in Manchester Veterans Park.
A little.
So, that is not the same person, and it is in Manchester as a paver, not a.
Right.
Yeah.
But is this the same, I don't mean to keep going back and forth, is this the same Sergeant John Tracy?
No.
This bridge is dedicated to?
William, this is William.
William, I'm sorry.
This is much newer than the bridge dedication.
It does say William, I'm sorry, I'm reading it, it does say William, William John Tracy. I'm just trying to figure the connect, you know what I'm saying?
Right, because I think that was to.
This is saying sacrificed their lives during the Gulf War. So unless that's a much more recent dedication than I thought it was.
I'll do some research.
Oh, that's been, I was, we did, that was.
Two thousand and three?
It's possible.
See, I'm trying to draw a correlation between, I mean, maybe there is.
Maybe that is the correlation.
Yeah. Can you do some research on it?
I can do some more.
That's okay, Dave, yeah. Find out, is it?
I remember, I was there.
I mean, there must be a reason that was dedicated to him.
The bridge.
Yep, and if there's a local connect, that we have, I mean, I think of.
Yeah, if there's a local connect, then there's some reason to look at that.
Well, that's the thing, maybe he was a Webster resident at some point.
He was, his father is Bill Tracy, his father is Bill Tracy.
There we go.
Down underneath the power lines, his garage just.
I'll call them that.
Yeah.
And then I'll, in the future, put that in the letter too.
Are they still here?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So then, check, I would suggest just check with them, see, and talk with those people.
Yeah, I was just going to call them.
Because I mean, if it's local, then we should, yeah.
Okay, any further correspondence in there?
That's all the correspondence.
All right. Being that our audience is now filled up with people that I believe are here for the agenda item that would have started at this point normally, in the twenty twenty-five budget, I would suggest that we move on to that. All right, so which, I don't have sitting right in front of me which budget items we will be working at, or should I say which departments?
For the public that are here, we have highway, library, energy committee, and Conservation Commission.
All right.
So, and then a couple ones that are just off this one. It starts with the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
In your binder. Sorry to put you on deck, Amanda.
No, it's okay, um, should I stand?
Please, come on down. Oh, we got this company's.
I put your numbers into the budget for the board, and I also have a breakdown.
Conservation.
Okay.
That you provided me with. Being like Dana so well today.
Keep praising yourself, will you?
Well, I mean, I see administration and other conservation have the two members, so.
It's halfway late.
I'm sure she'll be able to talk to that.
And here's the breakdown.
One for all of us?
Yep.
All for one and one for all?
Yeah, that's in four.
Hey, man, everybody?
Welcome.
I'm Amanda Elms, I am the chair of the Conservation Commission. I joined the commission, as you might remember, earlier this year, I took over for Chris, and she's been helping me get adjusted and catching me up.
Congratulations.
Thank you, so this is my first time presenting the budget, so if there's questions or things you normally do, just jump in. And basically, before I joined the Conservation Commission, I was working at the Southeast Land Trust for about five years, and then before that, I was working with a state monitoring conservation land, so I have a background with conservation work. So for this year, we are, the Conservation Commission is requesting four thousand, four hundred and five dollars to do our work this upcoming year, six hundred and twenty-five of which is for administrative expenses, such as membership in the New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commissions, and workshops for educating conservation commission members on best practices and other new topics that are relevant to our work. And three thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars is being requested for commission work, like a new trail bridge at Mock Memorial Forest, a new kiosk, some monitoring work and events that we put on for, for free, for members of the public. Did you want me to go into more detail than that?
I see that there's actually some pretty decent detail right below that on what we've just been presented with, so. I guess I'll just give you a chance to talk about the commission work with the bridge, and this is the first time I'm hearing about a kiosk, and I've always been asking for trail maps, which I see on here, so please tell us more.
Yes. So, basically, out in Mock Memorial Forest, which is just across the way here, as you get a little bit further into the property, there's actually a couple of areas that could use a bridge, but we felt that we'd probably best be able to kind of do one bridge this upcoming year. And so we actually had one of my former colleagues at Selt come out and take a look. He does all the trail work for the Southeast Land Trust, and to help kind of provide a quote what he think it would cost. If we got a volunteer for us to try to put the bridge together, it'd be about six hundred, or five hundred to six hundred dollars for that, for just the supplies. So that is an area where there's kind of two streams that kind of come in together, and currently, there's quite a big dip that goes down, so there's a little bit of erosion happening.
Is that one of the portions that's currently closed?
Not currently closed, it just, we, there were some trees down in the area, but we recently got some of those cleaned up this past week.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, so we're trying to kind of get those trails back into more usable shape and more friendly for anyone to be able to use them. And then the kiosk, it was something that I was thinking of just in terms of increasing people to use the trails in the first place. As you may know, the actual, the property that you first walk through to get into Mock is actually Conservation Easement, it is not owned by the town, but it's privately owned. And so one of the things I'd like to do this year is to contact the landowners of the Conservation Easement and ask if they would be okay with us putting in a kiosk there, right on the road frontage, so that you know, if you, you know, start walking the trails, you have a trail map right there, first thing, whether I have to put up the first time to walk through the property quite a bit. If you've been out there, you know you walk for a distance, and then there's like a mock, welcome to Mock Forest. So my idea was to get it kind of on the roadside, and then also to have an area where there can be individual maps for people to take with them as they walk. So we're in the process of trying to map the different trails there, and get them into a format that people can use as a trail map.
So when you say kiosk, you more or less mean informational sign and maybe a way to take a map, too?
Yes, so something that I, there's a couple different ideas that we had, and we were going to look into it if we got the budget approved, but basically, thinking, you know, something, a slim kind of two-posted thing that maybe has a little bit of a shelter on top to protect it, and then something large enough to display a couple sheets of paper, and including a trail map of the property.
Okay.
So I'm interested, first of all, I go down in there, it's very nice, and I think it's very appropriate to do what you got to do to keep it safe, and you have a lot of seniors that walk that property with their dogs and whatnot, too. I hunt it, I hike it, but there are seniors that during other times of the year that walk through this, so putting an appropriate bridge in.
Yeah.
You know, a crossing, I guess we could call it.
Yeah.
Tell me about your wildlife crossing signs, and the reason I'm asking is in no way to be critical, because I think they're very important. I've asked the police a couple times during certain times of year to put it on the electric board down here, because the deer crossing the road between the highway safeties, the police station, and down the road about three miles, I mean, I came back from dinner the other night, so three deer.
Yeah.
So, you know, right next to the road, so. So where would you consider putting those, where would you think of them?
So those specifically that we've talked about so far were actually for turtle crossings in the springtime when they hatch, and you have the little, the little babies trying to get over to the.
So out by the lake?
This was the spot that we were planning on putting them, is actually off of Corn Hill Road on the Webster side. There's a couple wetland areas kind of closer to the Deer Meadow end of the road that I, I live over in that area, so I noticed a number of turtles that were hit this year from cars, so.
Why move four of them out just down here by the lake, going out to beyond Little Hill? Okay, I've stopped many early morning, the summer move. You know, people laugh about it, I'm not so, I don't find it so comical, okay?
Yeah.
You know, they can't get across the road, and.
Oh, yeah.
Some people run right over them, it's just, it's kind of disgusting.
Yeah.
In my books, so.
Yeah.
My feelings.
Mine, as well.
No, you know, just sharing. But with that being said, yeah, I was just curious what you were thinking, but if inappropriate areas, I think it makes sense.
And then, and just in terms of administrative expenses, I don't know if you have all the acronyms that I put in there, but the New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commissions membership is something that we've done in the past, that we'd like to continue to do. They are a group dedicated to supporting conservation commissions in New Hampshire, and have a lot of resources, and they also put on annual workshop each year that we attend, to help us understand our role, different resources available, as well as new information that's come out, it's really helpful to attend. And I put in some other workshops as well, including the Saving Special Places Conference, which is put on in part by Human Age Cooperative Extension every April, and that is also to support land conservation in New Hampshire. Those are all things that would help us do our work.
One that I see also listed here in the further breakout is the Squam Lakes Science Center event.
Yes.
Squam Lakes is awesome, for anybody that is not familiar. I believe our library has brought them in in the past.
Yeah, at the end of the summer session.
Is this now moving over to conservation from library, or are you working together, or talked about this, or? Because I don't want you to both end up trying to bring the same people in and then find that out.
The library does it, I think she's done it twice now at the end of the summer reading program.
Oh, okay.
So you know, I talked to Catherine in there.
Okay.
But last year, we didn't, the end of the summer, this year, we did a magic show.
Oh, okay.
So it's just random, you know, just find something to end the summer reading program.
Yeah.
So the fact that it was Squam Lakes was just what she chose that year.
Okay, yeah, that's good to know, to coordinate efforts going forward. But that was, we actually, we had them come in October this year to put on a free event.
Okay, so that was conservation this year, not library, okay.
So forty-four oh five is kind of a strange number, how about forty-five hundred?
Oh, that'd be great, that'd be great.
Clark, I had that ninety-five, it was more out.
I don't want to make the tax rate go up too much, how do you two feel about that?
I, I would say that what they've got in the breakdown makes a lot of sense, the question would be, like, the extra ninety-five isn't going to do something like another bridge, so.
Well, it would buy a few more boards for that crossing up here, because if you start getting into the payments, you're going to use pressure treated across it, right?
Yeah.
So I guess the question would be, if it were forty-five hundred instead of the forty-four oh five, yes, thank you if you're, if you're the Conservation Commission, but what would that, what would that enable you to do? Or what is the next portion that would actually enable you to do another thing as opposed to the forty-four oh five?
Sure, so one of the things we discussed at our last meeting was whether or not to do one or two bridges at Mock or wetland crossings. There are at least two areas that are in need of a, basically a bridge of some kind, that would be about twelve feet in length. We only put one of them in there. If we had another six hundred dollars and the volunteers were able, were able to get that, that would allow us to build that second crossing. But if we just had an additional ninety-five dollars, we could either put that towards boundary signs, which is something that we were, we had in our budget to have, you know, for our Conservation Easements and other properties in town that we could put up along the boundaries, to, one, help with our monitoring, but two, help anyone coming across the boundary or butters be able to recognize that it's conservation land, we could buy more of those. And, or we could buy more wildlife crossing signs, we have a lot of uses for that.
How much is that second bridge going to cost?
So they would each about, they would each be about six hundred, five to six hundred dollars.
Cool.
So if it were five grand, then you could get the second bridge, in theory.
Well, I think, I appreciate you speaking up, your philosophy. I kind of threw that stimulus out there to get some discussion. Reason I did was, I was going to ask you about that second bridge, but it was an ice chem up by another member. But I think, from what I'm seeing, the number of people that go out there, I see a lot of seniors, and if that second bridge is going to make it safer, for five hundred bucks, I mean, to me, it would make sense to do that. Save having the fire department rescue to be carrying somebody out of there with a broken leg.
Right.
At the wrong time of the year.
Yeah.
Just.
I guess my, my question there would be, before saying, yes, let's do the extra, would be to make sure that you've actually got the volunteers to do both bridges, instead of, I think I can manage to find some time to do one bridge. So I, I wouldn't want to just stick the money in unless we knew that they could do it. But I would agree that safety matters, and with the Conservation Commission stepping up towards the safety and maintenance of trails, especially if we actually finally get trail maps, that, that makes sense to me.
Whether you're walking, running, walking your dog, mountain biking, I guess you can out there in some places, or just hunting, you want to go out and sit on a rock for the afternoon, it's a beautiful place to go. So, but, but I, knowing those areas you're talking about, you've done a nice bridge across the sunset, but I don't have to worry about going for a swim when I'm walking across that.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, the high water was a problem, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm kind of a day one, I think you can come back to us with some, Marla, what do you think? Come back with some volunteers and say, these people will do it, I'd definitely be dedicated to asking the community to honor that.
Okay.
Do you think you have the volunteers to do that?
I need to coordinate with the other members of the Conservation Commission, because I, they have more familiarity with the volunteers in town.
You got a little more polls so far.
Yeah.
I mean, you okay doing that?
Yeah, absolutely. Is there a timeframe that I can get back to you, Scott?
Sure.
I mean, nothing is completely set in stone until after we have our budget hearing, but we try to do things as soon as possible. I mean, if you were to bring it up. I mean, if you were to bring it up at your next meeting and then let Russ know to.
Suppose you have a second meeting in December.
For us to know at our next meeting, that would be fine.
Can you wrap your arms around a couple of them and bring them to the meeting, too, so we, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. That would, I mean, that would be helpful, you know, they're here in front of us.
So it would make sense for the second meeting in December, because then you'll have your meeting and then our meeting, I think, is a week after.
Okay, great.
I, I, I know you guys do a great job. It's been a while since I've been down there. But what I'm thinking is where the, it's gouged out.
Yeah.
From the river.
Uh, there's streams that come down.
Come down through, so it's far enough away from the river, so when it's that high that we're not, you're not gonna lose your bridges. Uh, you probably gave that a lot of thought.
Yes, this is a more of an upland area before you get down the steep slopes.
What a good, very good point.
Yes.
I just, because I know down beside the river, some of them places, pretty hard to get through there now, so. I, I figured you guys had a plan, I was just at the ass.
Yeah, great.
That's a perfect, I'm sorry. That's a perfect good example of local education.
Yeah.
I understand.
Absolutely.
Any further questions or comments for conservation commission? In that case, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The normal process is basically that, uh, you know, you presented and unless we wanna try to change something, we won't call you back in. Being that you are now looking to see if you're going to increase that. Uh, when that happens, then you, then you should probably come back in, uh, for that. But otherwise, thank you very much for the presentation.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks.
We gotta log that out there one more at a time.
Yeah, hope, maybe two.
All right, who is next?
So on my list, it's Energy Committee.
All right, probably followed by, uh.
Uh, let's do library right now, that's.
All right, so come on down, uh, Marty for Energy Committee.
Oh, okay.
He's putting together his final numbers.
I found I made a mistake.
I, I will, uh, hazard the guess that no requi- no change is requested, but, uh.
Well, there is, yeah. All right.
Uh, yeah, we're looking for volunteers.
Are you coming up with me?
This is Energy Committee.
She'll come up in a second, the library after.
Oh, okay, Energy Committee, right, there is no change.
Energy Committee is one.
Oh, I heard, yeah, you said, oh, no, okay, yeah.
Right, no, no change.
No change.
No change.
Nothing you want? Nothing needed?
Clark, stop asking if they want things.
We have, no, we have, uh.
I'm kidding.
I believe the, the number is five hundred, right? Yeah, it's for, uh, when we go to, either the two of us end up going to, you know, conferences, okay, yeah, yeah.
Generally and primarily been a combination of two things. One is for membership in the, uh, I'm blanking on their name now, but they throw the Local Energy Solutions Conference.
Right.
Uh, and then, uh, uh, the second portion of that is if we find smaller projects that we are able to do to increase the efficiency of something or, uh, educate people, then we have a little bit in there to be able to do that or get something to do here.
Yeah, we haven't done anything really for the last few years.
So that's what that is, but, um.
Well, that's a good, that's a good.
That's it. All right, so then, uh, I guess the next then is library.
Yeah, let's go to library.
So, come on up.
Come on down.
See, we told you I needed you to do this.
Right. That was good, that was less than. All right, so, and you have, you have the, uh, the budget that I have proposed.
That's transfer station.
Yeah.
Do we have a copy of that?
So.
Yes, it's page, it says page one, but it's like the third page back.
Yeah.
Right from the.
You have.
Oh, and this is what, Marty?
Actually, it's.
If you don't, I have copies too.
No, I, I sent, uh, I sent them to Russ.
Why the library right here?
Apparently I only have one copy of it.
Oh, yeah, there is, is any difference in what we already have?
It is. I had an issue putting it in the spreadsheet because we're missing twenty twenty-five in there. And I couldn't find a copy on the computer of what twenty twenty-five was.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And I was looking for it because I could plug it in and then plug that in, but I printed what I had.
So, um, so I have the, I, I submitted a budget and I saw a mistake.
Okay.
Um, and the mistake is on the employer share. And it's like, it's pretty much, um, about doubled. So this actually, and if I can have, do the recalculation.
So it should be sixty-eight forty?
Well, the number, um, see, the number that I have here on the employer share, that I had in there was sixty-eight forty, but it should be thirty-five, thirty-four.
Because it's thirty-five, thirty-four.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna go employer share three thousand sixty-four, am I not saying?
You're not got, you don't have the same thing. So that was twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, right, I had, I had pretty much, well, not quite doubled it, I don't know how I got that number.
What is the correct employer share?
Yeah.
You just said it should be thirty-five, thirty-four.
What did we find?
We thought you were like, it's dou- double the sixty-eight.
No, 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 this, so.
So propose as much as thirty-five.
So.
Instead of.
Yeah, instead of.
Three thousand, three ninety-eight.
Yep.
It's one of the hundred and something dollars.
So, yeah, other than, other, once, when I correct that, and the only, the other numbers that went up, of course, are, are usual, uh, we, we give our salary to the librarian. Uh, this time it was, um, two and a half, uh, percent on the, um, COLA. And we also added a hundred, um, one point four, uh, which we gave. And we did the same thing for our, um, our assistant librarian. Of course, for her, it was only a couple of hundred dollars, really. Um, the only other things that went up, we went up on the, um, on the materials, which is mostly books and video, and videos and stuff like that. Price has gone up on everything, and in fact, now we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to buy it all from Amazon, pretty much, because the.
Baker too, it's gone.
Right, yeah. So that went up a little bit, uh, it's, now we have it as, um, twelve thousand. Twelve thou- we, we just evened it out to twelve thousand for that. That was a po- that was last year, it was, um, eleven, one ninety-six. So, you know, so went up by eight hundred dollars. Uh, the only other thing that went up, um, was the, uh, our, uh, our, um, housekeeper. I haven't even told them yet, but I, he called me and he said that he thought he should be, get a raise. He's been working for us for many, many years and he wants to go from fifty dollars a month to sixty dollars. And I said, I think it'll probably, it'll probably pass.
Right.
Right. So.
Yes, do not lose the housekeeper. Please.
Really, he's, he's such a bargain.
We scrub our own toilets at Fly House.
Well, they have a nice housekeeper for sixty dollars.
There you go, yeah, they have housekeeper.
Right.
So, and that's about it, uh, nothing, everything else stayed pretty much the same. So obviously the total numbers will change, and I will.
What are we going up from?
Yeah, so, so I think what's sitting here under proposed was actually what should have been current here is twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
And then what's on this paper that you don't have is what's actually being proposed.
Right, which is the total, oh.
Right, thank you.
Which.
So if you wanna give me a minute or two, I can actually put in the numbers.
Yeah, I was gonna type it in the spreadsheet to make it happen, but, uh, that will work as well. And what did you say the employee share was supposed to be?
Well, it's, you know, it's, it's point zero seven six five, right? That's what the percentage is.
But here it was sixty-eight forty and you said another number.
Right, which was wrong, you know, so.
Which was, I think, thirty-five something?
Thirty-six.
It should, it actually, it should be thirty-five, thirty-four, right?
Thank you. Uh, let's see, so miscellaneous, uh, fourteen forty is listed here, is that, uh, what you're expecting?
Yes.
Looks like in most years prior, it was around two hundred and forty or so. Just wanna make sure that that's.
Yeah, um.
Because you've also got an everything else line previously that maybe it got combined with, because the everything else line was twelve hundred in the past. And so if you put the two together, it's about the exact same amount.
So can I ask a question just for the education of the moment? We have salary. Marty, is that the salary thirty-six, I'm sorry, thirty-seven, eight sixty-six? Is that the salary for two people or?
No, the salary is what we pay the librarian and the, our, no, actually, it's the other way around. Payroll is for, yeah, payroll is for our, our assistant librarian. And salary is the, I just wanted to separate them.
Yep. But it's a little confusing, because when it says payroll, it doesn't note, not being critical, it doesn't note who it's for, I mean, not who, but what it's for. It's just payroll.
Right.
And you would think payroll and salary are the same thing.
It's because she's hourly.
Yeah, no, I, I totally get that. And you might wanna write that in there, hourly, so, you know, it's, not to be picky, but to be picky.
Well, yeah.
Just, just a thought.
So you're, so you're saying I should put it down as payroll hourly?
I would do that.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Because I mean, obviously, they, yeah.
Okay.
It's important because they deserve, you know, definitely deserve.
So the number I now have, um, for our, uh, expenses is seventy-one, four, six, nine.
Seventy-one, four, six, nine, okay.
And so obviously that changes our income.
And just to double check, you said that was, what, seventy-one, four, seventy-two?
Seventy-one, four, six, nine.
Six, nine. Okay, well, something in here has three extra dollars.
Oh.
And here we are.
Okay, because I actually, I had it with only, with one dollar, one dollar, um, and.
So the, uh, doing that and then your, uh, from investment dividend, uh, which is the interest, the.
Right.
Is that just a projected? Do you have an actual?
It's, it's always three percent. That's what we have coming from, uh.
Okay.
New York Life. And, uh, and we generally try and spend that annually.
Yep, okay. So that looks, uh, so total, once I've put those numbers in here, uh, with the total expenses at seventy-one, four, seventy-two, which is three dollars more than he said. Uh, and the fifty, forty, uh, coming from, uh, the requirement from the town would be sixty-six, four, thirty-two, which is three thousand nine hundred and ninety-two more than previous, uh, requests that I had here.
Right.
Uh, from last year, which is a total of a six percent increase.
Okay.
All of those sound reasonable?
Six percent sounds like.
It sounds like a lot?
It does sound, because actually, the, uh, two employees, right, well, actually, she's not an employee, she's a salary. But anyway, that comes, that was, that was four percent, uh, for each of them.
Well, uh, so what I'll say is that.
Also, again, I added a little bit for the materials, which was eight hundred dollars plus.
So, so the breakdown that I have shows that employer share goes up four percent, household goes up eleven percent, material is up seven, payroll's up four, salary's up four, uh, and the rest of the items stay the same. And so that ends up being a total of a six percent increase according to the spreadsheet, so.
Okay.
But all of that sounds reasonable and it is a couple thousand dollars, basically, so.
Yeah.
Any further questions, comments, things you wanna present?
Well, do you wanna know what the library did this year?
That would be wonderful.
I, I know you always ask. Happy to answer any questions that. Thank you, Russell.
I, I guess I will, uh, based on seeing it here, I, I wanna, as I support most of these sorts of things enthusiastically, we'd love to have you, uh, give a plug for the Maker Play Mondays.
Well, they're coming back on, on Monday starting in twenty twenty-six, so you don't have long to wait. Yeah, they're very popular.
I think you were asking, just what is that, what is that?
Tell, tell people about them.
He knows, but I, I, I've never been to Mark or Play Mondays, but maybe I could bring my grandson.
Well, you should, because those are the kinds of things, she has a lot of different things that she does and she pulls out one thing for a month.
Yeah.
And has it out there, so some of it, um, was electrifying bugs.
Oh, neat.
Not real bugs.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Plastic, plastic bugs, no, we're not into that. Um, and she has, uh, she has building materials and lots of other things, but I'm afraid I don't remember now.
But more or less something interactive.
Yes.
Touching.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, like the cir- the circuit makers or, uh, magnetic building blocks, all, all kinds of stuff.
And when they do this on Mondays, is it in the evening for the day?
She's there from one to eight, I was there from one to eight.
Oh.
Yeah.
What's the age group?
Um, it, uh, it all depends on the child. And you've got some really young ones that can do it and some older ones that can't. And she has different activities, so different levels too.
Excellent. And then when you say it'll start in twenty six, twenty twenty-six, will it be listed to when it, when it actually happens or, um?
Um, she puts out, I don't, are you on Facebook?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, get on the, the library Facebook page.
Okay.
And she does, um, now that we don't have the grapevine, she does a, a monthly thing. And she'll also announce what's going to be on Monday for, uh, the Maker Place.
I was gonna say, I used to get a monthly email that way from the library, but the last few months I haven't gotten that, so I've seen it on Facebook.
Because I've been getting it.
Interesting. One of those wonderful things that our website is doing phenomenally right now, and we'll have a new one soon, so.
Well, Russ and I are sort of in the process of doing something, but we can't talk about it yet.
No, it's a top secret.
What's happening in the library?
Well, we're always trying to think of ways to get more people to know what's going on in town.
Well, I already know that, yeah, I know that it's there too, you know?
Um, so something that I do want to ask about is, I, I see that you've got a line for computer copier and equipment. I know that the library has not been part of the IT services that the town has for everything else. And to my recollection, uh, from being up here for basically six years now, I've never seen a request for a computer or a purchase of that either.
We, we have.
So, okay, so I was gonna say, like, how, how is that working and, and.
I have.
Like, where in a replacement cycle are you or what is, what is the need? Because outdated computers are wonderfully, and not only annoying, but security threats.
So, um, I always put that down as part of our capital outlay, which is why it doesn't show up in our budget.
Ah, okay.
And we're going to be buying Catherine a new one, uh, next year or the end of this year, depending.
Yeah, we just, didn't we? Yeah, we just, didn't we, we bought new computers la- earlier this year.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, you know, and, and our, uh, we, there's two computers which are for the public. And they are pretty much rarely used now. I mean, it, it used to, they were, they were, they were getting a lot more use.
Well, now that these are more powerful than most people's computers, it, uh.
Yeah.
Does negate the need for them somewhat, but.
Yeah, but there's still, you know, I, I don't think there's any reason that we have to have public computers, but I think every library does, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Curiosity, how will those secure?
There's nothing, there's nothing on them as far as like.
Meaning? No, but somebody can get online and go anywhere, right?
Or install something on them that then does things while they're not there.
Well, libraries, pretty much, uh, you can go anywhere on a, on a computer. There isn't a whole lot of censorship in a library, cause, you know, then you get into issues of freedom, speech and all of that. But we don't keep, uh, Catherine's computer is separate from the others. So if somebody went in there, the, the worst thing they could find is, we have one computer that's split with the Historical Society, and they find all the materials that they put on there.
Well, public access to a public computer, you, you're right, the, it's a small library, so you'd know who was in there and probably know who was nefarious anyway.
They're also on a separate network from the town, so.
That's where I was going.
I think the more things that they're gonna go after is the finance and the.
Well, there was another direction I was going, which we won't get into tonight.
Okay.
I was just curious how it was, it's fine.
Yeah, I don't think that they could get anything other than, I mean, obviously, they're, they're entitled to see, you know, our budget.
No, I'm talking about nefarious activity, criminal activity on the computer, that's what I'm talking.
He's, he's thinking, people downloading something that shouldn't be on there.
But libraries that small, we hopefully see.
You know who's in, who's come in and come out.
Right.
Yeah.
You can point your fingers to the screen.
But yes, we, we could sit here and think about that.
That is something we should probably talk to you about, when I have, in January, somebody from Primex is coming to help us develop an incident response plan, and maybe somebody from the library should come at some point and sit in on that. To say if something gets compromised in the library, it, you would be easier to clean up, cause you could probably just clear your computers out and start again, but it would be more difficult for the town office.
So everybody doesn't think I'm totally intrusive, that was exactly where I was gonna go.
Yeah.
And say to you, we need the offer to them, too.
Yeah, and to, to me, it's less about what's going to happen to the library's, you know, information, cause yes, it's basically not public anyway. It's more about, um, if someone comes in and doesn't even think about anything, they're visiting a website, just a advertisement on a website that maybe came up that they were searching for and didn't even stay on for half a second, cause it wasn't what they thought they were finding, um, that can infect the system and then make the insistent, the system start attacking the rest of the network and all of the other wireless networks here and so on and so forth. So trying to make sure that things stay secure upfront is an important part of that. And so, uh, that's one of the things that we should definitely have a discussion when we switch over our IT company and the Primex, uh, stuff for security. Maybe there's a point in time where it makes more sense to bring it all together, so that someone is able to take care of that and monitor it and, and keep everything updated and so for you.
Educational formats, as Dave is saying, they can block out, I'll be very blunt, they can block out somebody going to an inappropriate website. That's, that, that's all I'm trying to say.
I mean, I think the only thing that I would worry about, which they can't do right now, at least as far as I know, they can't look and see, like, who's taking out what books, right?
Well, I'm not concerned about that, yeah.
Right, the only person who can do that is Catherine.
Yeah. I'm more concerned about nefarious activity, going, coming to a public library, happens in Concutte all the time, and I know they've got blockouts. Dave can tell you more, he's the, he's our, he's my IT professional here. But what I'm saying to you is, and come at this from different directions, he comes at it from a technical aspect, I come at it from a security aspect. And they can put a block on you, so somebody wanted to go to an X rated site, which shouldn't be happening, it should be happening in their own home, not in the li- you know what I'm trying to say? They can block that, just, just so you folks have that type of protection, that's kinda where I was going in my discussions. Much like in, in, you go in a hotel, many hotels, uh, Corte, yeah, Mary, those, they block out any of that activity, that's all. Just educationally.
Yeah, and so far, we haven't had it happen.
No, no, we don't want it to.
So, all right, anything further for the library?
Very good, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And do we have more than one left, or just?
We have my one.
All right, is that, is that the last one?
And then we got a couple ones that are just off this one. And there was the transfer station, but I haven't found that bunch of them yet, you know, we just talked about it, so.
Can we give that a break?
Yeah, Kelly, I don't wanna. I don't wanna listen to it.
Shouldn't you talk trash again?
I don't wanna hear what slips six inches.
I just wanna know where the portion is for me to put it on the budget.
I'm just kind of.
Take care, lady.
You know?
You're right into the water tonight.
I know.
Hey.
It's clear though, don't tell anybody. Not clear.
It's all going away, they say at the end of the year, but with everything that's going on. I just get the whole, I'm gonna have to set up some appointment, and it's just, we just gotta figure out the right day or get help to get them all over there. Is it something, we can just bring all that away or?
Uh, you know what, uh, well, well, you could probably talk to Mike, do we?
I don't, I don't, yeah, I didn't know who to talk to, that's why I didn't.
Yeah, 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 call him up and he'll, he'll schedule it right in, yeah, that should, yeah.
The, the thing I'll say, uh, about that is there are at least two proposed, uh, responses to roll that back that should be voted on at some point this year.
Which, you know, I'm not a big rule follower, but.
But, but you know something, I don't know if it's the right, I mean, just go get your shit inspected by the.
Yeah, and again, there, again, there is that perimeter of, great, and I don't know about the safety, but like, from the, from our crew, I have to inspect everything commercially, so, yeah.
Right, and I just, with what's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that I.
You know what's gonna be good, and it's, you know what, it's cheap to get your thing inspected, unless you find something cool.
Huh?
Unless you find something cool wrong with it. I get it, but you know what I mean?
If you find something wrong, that I want it fixed.
Right, 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 no, but you know what I'm saying, for the most part, when I even look at the numbers, I'm like, wow, you know, that's not.
I just figured I would.
That would be awesome, do you want me to send my? Yeah, yeah, I'll just, yeah.
We stand there, but there's no numbers in it, yeah, cause I haven't got numbers.
What, on my budget?
Yeah.
All kinds of numbers.
Now that he's back.
Big numbers.
Hey, have a seat and, uh, tell us, uh, tell us what's going on and, uh, what things should be.
It's, uh, the library.
Uh, what's going on?
I think it was after energy committee.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I was in streets, should be in there, so.
Financial administration.
It'll show mostly green, because it's just.
Financial administration, and then the next one's highways and streets, but, you know, we have times when you, if that's kind of remember.
I'll find it, just begin.
Well, that, that stuff's really, I'm not gonna go up on my budget. Um, I have money left over quite a bit, because we were in different modes with the roads and different things. And that's, I wanted to talk to you folks about, I have a plan for some of that, but I guess we're not gonna worry, we won't worry about what I have left over at the moment, we'll worry about getting what we need for next year, that's your plan?
Sounds great.
So.
I'm gonna have to write it, right?
Yes, yeah, this is the one that Russell ran off of me.
Yeah, all right, perfect.
So the numbers, but Dave, you wanted them in percentage?
Well, no, so.
Talk to me about that.
Yeah, so, so, uh, previous years, when, when we've gone through this, we, we knew we were adding X amount, so that we made sure that you didn't lose anything or gain things per, uh, at the different year points. Uh, but it was just kind of a, let's guess it, throwing X amount of numbers into equipment versus labor versus supplies and parts. And so obviously, i- in looking at it, when you look at expenditures versus budgeted for twenty twenty five, they're not the same. Uh, and, for example, the difference in high, highway equipment on, on this one, for example, is, uh, roughly forty three grand that hasn't, uh, for, that's left for highway equipment, and roughly forty.
Seven, five and a half, right.
Seven and change for labor. Uh, so, but the labor is the lower number to start with, so that it's got, having more left over for budget, obviously, that's not the correct, uh, numbering for how it should be.
Well, it shouldn't.
And so for, uh, the, the request previously was that any future budgeting was going to require you to have, uh, an expected breakout to present to us for, like, how much should it actually be in each of these line items? And are there other line items that should be there to make it easier for you to track or, or something?
Correct, correct, so.
So that's where I wanna go.
Right, so the, the highway equipment in the labor is where it should have been, just some projects didn't get done. Okay? The only thing that I can see here is where we have, um, yeah, uh, fuel and rental. The rental equipment, we have in there at two thousand dollars. Um, the over the rail mowers are six grand a year to rent. And, uh, the shim, the shimmer that goes on front of the loader that we do our shimming with for a week after our road project is two grand. So that should be, that, that should be eight grand without the, without the fuel. So that probably should be at ten grand, the, the fuel, oh, that's the fuel for rental equipment? All right, so we don't have a, for rental equipment, that would, that will come out of, um, the highway equipment line, okay?
But currently.
Right.
Uh, we can certainly add a rental equipment.
No, no, we don't need to, I, 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 I looked at it wrong.
I read it.
Wrong, I, I see that now, but it's fuel for rental equipment, all right, all right. So there's gonna be, there'll be eight grand more coming out of that, and then I put in a bunch of bills. So I wouldn't.
But for what you're looking to do this coming year, what do you, what do you expect these need to be for this?
They probably need to be right where they're at at the moment.
Meaning what, the two thousand twenty five budgeting?
Right, right, what we budgeted for two thousand twenty five, full budget for two thousand twenty six. I won't go up on.
What is, what is in the line of highway equipment again, exactly?
Is that, no, that's, that's, so if I send a bill in for ten hours for the grader.
Yeah, oh, okay, okay.
Four hours for my loader, two hours for the roll.
That's in that number, okay.
So just a thought, just a thought.
Yeah. Talk to me, John.
We're doing this survey, which we haven't seen yet, traffic signs. Do those come out of your budget, or whose budget do they come out of?
What's that?
The traffic signs, if you have to buy new traffic.
They'll come out of my budget.
Have you been able to budget enough for that here?
Uh, we can, we have money, this money, this highway signs.
I'm not trying to stump you up.
No, 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 there's six hundred dollars in that line, um.
I'm assuming, how much is a traffic sign? I don't know, how much are?
I.
I have to check with Monday, we get those from the state president, so they're not bad.
They're, they're, they're not cheap, they're a hundred and something bucks.
Stop signs and. Yeah, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
But.
So if you needed fifteen signs, it's fifteen hundred bucks.
Yeah, but at the end of the day, it's all out of the bottom number, so like, traffic signs, if we go over on that, I can take that out of, um, sand and gravel.
But I don't want you to take it, it's.
Yeah, we want to make it as accurate as possible for you.
Okay.
So that you don't end up with a, an overdraw.
The only, I see where you are going, but it's just, every year, it's, it's more here and less here and more here and some.
Correct.
Um.
You try to keep a good eye on, we, we don't want you to have to drive from Peter to PayPal.
No, and I haven't, I haven't been.
No, no, I'm gonna say that, yeah.
Um, Dave's been real great in Marlowe and the last, well, all on getting what we need.
And I wanna be supportive also.
And I'm not one to go up two percent, three percent, at times you have to, but, um.
Well, I mean, and, and as we appreciate you keeping it, I mean, that's the great thing, keeping it. Some of the leftover remaining balances, like on the shimming and the coal patching, you know, fifty thousand.
So.
So you'll carry that forward and then ask for another fifty thousand in a sense?
So it goes back into the.
It won't be carried, I either have to use that before the end of the year or encumber it, or it's gonna go back into general, right?
Right, which, which, you know, I know, it's like you said, a lot of, um, other things were happening.
I guess what surprised me was, and that's my era because of whatever, but, um, it's just, the summer just, all of a sudden, we got down on Detour Road, we got working, and it was just Russell and I, and we didn't get a lot of the other stuff.
Have you been able to hire another, uh, person to help you, not that Russell doesn't help you, I don't mean that.
Oh, no, I'd love to hire somebody that, I would, I, it, it's hard, John. It's hard to hire somebody that just doesn't wanna sit in the dump truck, or that can get out of the dump truck and load themselves and jump in the mower and go mow, um.
Com- combined capabilities aren't exactly what you're finding, so.
It's hard to find the right, it's, it's hard to find the right person.
And you've got money, correct me if I'm wrong, you've got money budgeted in here for labor for that purpose, if you could find the right person.
Right, that, well, it would, it would help out, I mean, you'd have to keep them busy on other projects other than the town too, but, um.
You mean your own projects?
Yeah.
But that also pays for Russell's salary too, right?
Pays for some of it, but not all of it.
Well, so to, to help in, in the explanation here.
Thank you.
Um, because he is a ro- the, the road agent, not, uh, employees, so when we get a bill for a portion of Detour Road, for example, that will include from the highway equipment line, X number of hours for this piece of equipment and that piece of equipment, and X number of hours for a foreman or another, uh, labor person that comes out of the other. Anything as far as salaries or hours that that person is actually getting paid is from Emmett and the company that, uh, he is working, uh, not directly from us.
Not directly from my budget, right.
So it's, it's the contracted labor and.
We get billed.
Equipment, we get billed, it's.
Right, I, right, I send a bill, I send a bill in at the end of, well, the week or each day, however, it all happens, and then they all collect and then whatevers, but, so, I, I have a hard time sitting here asking for more money for next year's budget, when I haven't even spent this year's budget yet. I'm not, I can't, I can't do it. I mean, I could, but it, it, I mean, but the, what I, what I would like to do, um, I mean, I've ordered some salt, I've ordered some cutting edges, um, we talked about this a year ago, and then also P. Mountain was gonna work with me and get me some new radios for the highway trucks, because they're all twenty years old and they're not working right. Where I have the money, I don't have a radio, a communication line or a radio line in this budget.
You should have new radios in those trucks.
Well, good radios, good communications are, are great.
You know, I, if you got money in there, that's what you should do.
And I.
Well, he's got supplies and parts, so.
I do, well, so. Supplies and parts.
But running with twenty-year radios with the liability of somebody getting hurt, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, but I just, I just wanted to run that by before I came in with, to, uh, with a PO for some new radios, and then, what's this all about? I like to be upfront.
Well, I appreciate that, but if you've got twenty-year radios in those trucks, and all the work you do around town, and some of the areas you go to around town, and you don't have a radio where you can get hold of somebody and you're not on the police channel, so you can at least call locally, or how they, how you and they work that out, you should have radios in those trucks.
Yeah, no, no, and, and, and we have, we have, but it's just they're getting old and the antenna stuff, it, it's in time to be, um.
I mean, that's gr- uh, gr- not your fault, but it's a liability.
Well, so it's a, it's a really good point that things like radios should be up to date for safety and security purposes as well as communication. Um, the, the thing that I'd say there is that we should definitely be a part of that, but they're also not our trucks, and so we shouldn't just be footing the entire bill for radios or other parts for, uh, trucks that are getting used in private contracting as well.
Well, if you go back way back into the thing when I took this job over.
So not that we shouldn't be supporting it, but that's one of the considerations.
But I don't use them radios for my own use.
Say you have to do it either.
I don't have a.
Emmett, I'm not even, please, don't even go.
I don't have a frequency of my own and them radios, the fire radio and the ones for the tech.
The town usage is my concern, I'm not saying you and Russell communicate about your next job privately, I wouldn't even further, I'm not saying, but when you're out here running around, one o'clock, two, three, four o'clock in the morning, you get the angry resident come out with a shotgun, wants to whale you because they don't like your, whatever you're doing, which you're doing your job, that's what I'm concerned about. And so, but, but you know, this is why we discuss these things, because Dave makes a good point, how do we?
Well, the fire bell rings, the fire bell rings, I'm down to Conquer Town Line, Betty Pearson's falling at the Pearson Farm, so Emery's up on that end of town, so he backs in there and sands the driveway for the ambulance, or gets the snowbank pushed out of the way, or just letting him know the ambulance is headed up that so he doesn't meet it in the wrong place means something.
That's one, that's one of the things why we discuss it, it's an excellent point, and that's sometimes, I'm not gonna speak for my colleagues here, but I'm gonna say, maybe that's something they don't realize it has to be done before you get the ambulance in there, I mean, like I said, we're not out there to, I, I get it, but sometimes other people don't because they haven't experienced that, so that's why it's important to put it on the table. Marlo, you, I, I can see you waiting to say something.
Well, I, I, I'm all for communication, I guess the only thing that I would say is, I guess, and this is, this seems like little, little bits of it, but I would think that would be part of the hourly rate of that piece of equipment is to be radioed, but maybe do you need to get more?
I don't need a radio, I don't need a radio to work my truck hour and late, it's to, it's to.
It's just to let people.
Yeah, it's just to, um.
Does it make any sense?
Well, I mean, I mean, I know like for us, in my, in my business, you know, you get your radio, you're backing into a job, you're communicating with the guy on the job, so I guess that's what I was just thinking is, yes.
It's a CB radio.
Yeah, 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 okay, so these are, these are.
These are FM radios, so you can talk to fire alarm, you come across, there's a tree down.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, something that you wouldn't need if you were just out in the private sector, it's something you would need.
I'd need it in that truck to be the, i- if you want, if you want me to have communication to be on the fire part of it, doing two jobs in one truck, it's like some storms, you plow in snow and you have your, you might as well have a command, y- y- you, you're making stuff happen.
I mean, I, I get the total thing, I see what she's saying.
I mean, you're listening to what Bosquen's doing, you're listening to what Warner's doing and Tookie and.
So I, I, I came to Emery one day when I came in the road from Warner, there's four or five trees down, you know, two of them on the one side, but all three of the rest are on this side, so I said to him, you gotta get out there, cause it's down, I don't know how he communicates that, but you're a hundred percent correct, and maybe the fire department at the same time needs to be communicated if there's wires involved or that, I, how many radios do you need?
Oh, probably five.
How many trucks do you have running?
How many trucks?
Five trucks, five trucks?
Well, I have three six-whealers and a one-ton.
So you've got five trucks running?
In a pickup.
You've got five trucks running?
Yeah.
That's what we're saying, how many radios do you have now? None?
Oh, no, I have, I have some old radios that I, um, got at the White Farm that are mine.
Those have been used fifteen million times.
Yep.
How many, how many, what's the price per radio?
What's that?
What's the price per radio?
Uh, last year they were five hundred, fifty watt radios, five hundred dollars a radio without the antenna.
So that's five times, that's twenty-five hundred bucks for safety. And you'd have them installed for.
Yeah.
Have them installed for, for.
No, I'd install them.
You can do that?
Yeah, it costs a lot, yeah.
How about channel certification, you pay, do you have to pay for that?
What's that?
Channel certification, they have each of those channels in here, do you have to pay for a channel for the fire?
Uh, that, you have to pay to get them programmed.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, yes, how much is that?
I'm not sure, John, it's not horrible.
So if we just say, if we just say seven hundred dollars per radio, that's a small price for somebody getting their foot cut off out there and not being able to get help when the plow comes down, if they can crawl back through it. Let me ask you another question, have you looked at portable radios to put into a, I'm just asking, so when you get out of that truck, you've got a portable radio with you?
Trouble with that is you get out, no, I don't, I ha- I ha- I have my portable radio from the firehouse with me all the time, and when Emery's plowing in the winter, he usually has his, but a portable radio to have in a truck, it's gonna get let, you're gonna take it out, you're gonna get the shovel out, you're gonna set the radio down.
That's all, that's all I wanna hear, that's good.
It's gonna be gone, and, and, I mean, every Sunday night faithfully, if not Friday night, you take your radio out of your pickup, turn it on, charge, cause the dead battery in the radio on a portable radio is no good.
You know, Emmett, and let me, let me be sincere, okay, and I, I don't want you to think I'm being a jerk, but some night, you need the radios, we need to get you the radios, you can't be out there running around without radios, and it's just drilling you down in the weeds like we just did to find out exactly what you need, you follow what I'm saying? And if you can get those radios for five hundred bucks and get your channels in them, I'd offer my colleagues for a safety procedure for twenty-seven hundred bucks, that's pretty, you need them, I mean, you can't, you can't be out there without a radio.
And, and what I would say there is that, um, to your point, supplies and parts, there's, that much is still remaining in this year's budget, so if that's a PO that he's expecting to come or to encumber or something, that, that is the way to handle that if that's what's gonna be done.
So can we say get the radios? Can we do that? You okay with that, Marlo?
Yeah, I'm, I'm never gonna say no to something, I just, I was just trying to figure, as you're trying to budget money, what is per, your per hour rate with your piece of equipment?
But it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't, no, I, I see where you're coming from.
But, but the deal was, the deal was tire chains, lights, radios, wear parts.
There you go, there you go.
That all went, I mean, at.
So you're gonna bring us a PO for the radios?
Yeah, I'll get ahold of, um, Brian.
Do you have that in the, the current road agent contract? If not, we should make sure it's added in, so that that doesn't become a question later.
The town covers the radios?
Well, radios are provi- they're plug and play, radios are provided.
Yeah, if I get done, take the radios out of the truck and put them off.
You hear what I'm, you hear what I'm saying, just so we don't understand each other.
Yeah, the town owns the radios.
You get done, you unplug the radio, and that's simple as that, each radio has a serial number on it, what he needs to do is give you a list of the serial numbers on the radios, okay, fair enough?
Yeah.
I, I just wanna make sure that anything that we're doing in this sort of manner, like, we, we are in the process of doing the road agent contract, so we should make sure that, well, if the town is supposed to be on the hook for covering radios and making sure that he's got radios, let's make sure it's in the contract, that it's.
I agree with you, yeah, but I just want you to understand, you're plug and play.
Right.
Close the point on the radio.
Right, well, we have, I mean, I, one of the radios that went to heck not too long ago that I replaced out of some that I bought from the White Farm was one of the radios that Brian Milano retired way back.
That was a long time ago.
And they were gonna throw it out.
And Emmett, nothing, you know, I, I know my colleagues sometimes look at me with my safety hat, but you need the radios, you can't be out there without a radio.
No.
Given, given everything you're running into nowadays, you can't.
Not, not when you, not when it's freezing rain and you back sanding and, um.
Or you've got a wire down, it's between the two wheels.
Well, to be honest with you, even having the conversation right now, get the radios, you got four, thirty-five hundred dollars left in there, get the friggin' radio.
Yeah, so that's.
That's what I'm saying.
I think that's great.
Yeah, so that's, you know, remaining balance on budget, but what we're trying to do is future budget.
Right, so I think.
Do you expect, so one of the ones that I, I see that, like, yeah, some of them haven't spent through all of it, they've may have a large amount remaining, like, equipment and labor, but you've said you just didn't manage to get out to specific jobs and projects you intended to, uh, so that makes perfect sense.
I mean, how about your calcium?
The one that I wanna ask about a lot is the shim and cold patch, cause it, uh, maybe there's additional, uh, bills that are coming in, but I show that we only had seventeen fifty-two out of fifty thousand spent, and, you know, for filling potholes and, and stuff like that with, with shim and cold patch, that seems like a very large, uh, difference, and so I wanna like, make that more realistic, unless there's, that's one of those particular projects or something that didn't happen and you have a expectation for that next year.
Right, because I had some shim in that I was gonna do, and Warren got busy and kinda, it didn't happen, and he was gonna come out and get me a price for that to encumber that, so I wouldn't lose that for next year.
Cause, you know, that, yeah, that's kind of an important part of what you do, which is, like, yeah, cause, cause if you can get it patched over, it stops it from deteriorating further.
Do you have a list of those areas for shimming?
Uh, pretty much all the roads that we have rebuilt, yeah, no, I, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
And what do you have to do with that? Is that something you, like, what do you guys, you have the grader and he brings you the pavement, or he does the shimming?
No, 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 it's easier just to have him, we go out, we go out and ditch it.
Yeah.
Go out and ditch it, and then he just comes along with the machine and, um, gives it a one over.
So it's not something that you were, needed your help, cause we, I get the, the being behind on working people, but I guess I'm just gonna say it, I would like to see that of any of this, just be more mindful to get that, have him, I mean, get him right on for, for April, because, because at the end of the day, that, yes, you're gonna have to tear roads apart and fix them, and you've got plenty to do that reason, but I would like to see that budget especially be used so that, um, and, you know, just get, it's just a request that I would have personally.
Right, and a lot of that, a lot of that, that money usually goes out in gravel, it usually doesn't go out a lot in shim and cold patch, that fifty thousand, that's for winter sand, that's for winter sand, and the reason that's down is, winter bank runs sand is, well, a eight dollars a yard for it in Salisbury, in five over the Fred Hills, and we usually get three thousand yards that we pay them, and I've been getting that out of a town pit, so I haven't been, and we did screen, we did screen out a bunch this spring, so that must be that money that we used.
Is that the fifty-three, five hundred I'm looking at right now?
Well, right now, right now, road, salt, gravel, winter sand is twenty-five, four thousand, but I figured you probably would use that before the end of the year, you know?
Right, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna, right, I'm gonna go down and screen up a bunch more sand to have for this winter, and if we don't use it, it will be there for next year, it will be money in the bank.
Marlo, where were you looking?
Um.
Six twelve?
Second one up from the bottom.
So like, so where does that, where did, you were starting to say that the shim and the cold patch had to do with winter sand, but that's not what you were saying.
Right, right, usually, usually the shimming, usually the shimming comes out of road preservation, doesn't come out of my regular budget, the winter sand, the calcium, the salt, the salt, that salt, the salt that I got today is eleven grand, so you take that, so that's only gonna be, you take eleven out of twenty-four.
Thirteen thousand left, yeah, how much winter sand do you already have in stock? You, how much you hoping to get?
What's over there, there's probably.
How much more yards do you have to get of that before?
I really probably don't have to get any, but it, it's always good to have some on, so in, in.
Who brings you the sand, do you go get that or something?
No, we process it out of the town pit, the town owns land on Duck Road.
Okay, I got you, yeah, I know, yeah.
So we screen it.
But you're not confused because he said that he sometimes gets it from Fred Hill.
I did.
At five yards yard and eight dollars out of Salisbury, so you're trying to say.
Yeah, good point, yeah, thank you.
That's the money I'm saving by using the town's property.
So let me ask you another question, while I'm, you were concerned the other night, I think you made a valid concern about sand getting wet, or something getting wet, salt to sand?
Sand.
Have you, and again, I'm just, my colleagues here are just bringing something up that you might wanna consider, have you given any thought to getting a large quonset hut to cover that with so you can maintain that sand so it doesn't get wet?
Not where we're at.
Not down here?
No, it's not feasible.
And, and what me, so. Cause you can't put it up, you don't have enough room.
Well, it's not, there's really no room to work, you've got your, um, wire that you work under all the time, and, um, I've, we've, we've been over there for thirty years.
So a short-term fix to a long-term problem isn't really viable, is what you're telling me?
Right.
Okay.
Is that, do you feel like that's quite a problem with it being out, not undercover? The sand and salt, I mean?
It, it's, if you have two thousand, if you have, say you have three thousand yards of sand outside, and you know, you've been there, and February, you've got three feet of frost, you move six buckets of frozen chunked stuff around the back of the pile to put two buckets in before the rest of it falls down.
Hence you understand my concern.
Yeah, but.
There's nothing we can do to help you with that.
Hmm, not until, you put it into a building, and then that, then that still doesn't cure it all away, and so you put, unless you add, um, a percentage of salt into there.
It's the time it takes you to move three chunks versus put two chunks in the truck.
Well, no, that isn't, no, that isn't, I'm sorry, John, you do that on an off day.
But you still have to do it.
You have your two bays of salt, sand in the sand shed that you, that you work during a storm.
Yep, I get it.
And then when they get half empty.
You fill your sand shed.
Your, your sun is shining, you go down there and you take the time, you don't, you can't fight it during a, an ice storm.
Well, that's, you, you, I'm trying to get my head wrapped around.
You can't fight it during a, a night storm.
I thought you were fighting it during the storm, you're thinking it's not a.
No, you, you, you drive it crazy.
You got a plan, it's up on here, it's good.
So I wanna go back to something that you just mentioned with the shimming and cold patch and that that normally comes out of preservation, um, one of the things that we had done was move more into the budget and out of the preservation trust fund, so that the budget was getting funded more, uh, and the trust fund was only getting funded for preservation over multiple years, um, that was mentioned, that that was for chip seal, and that was usually about a hundred K that was spent each time, uh, and, uh, you said that, uh, last year, uh, you said that you were expecting the Pleasant portion and Franklin Pierce in twenty twenty-six, so we were putting fifty thousand in each of the two years to make sure that it was there, uh, because there was a little, uh, sorry, we were putting fifty in to make sure it was gonna be ready, cause there was a little bit more than fifty K left in preservation at the time, however, uh, now when I look at what is currently in preservation, uh, it's listed at about three thousand eight hundred and change, so we've spent about four, forty K and, and change, forty-five K and change, uh, out of road preservation, um.
Who, who did that?
Well, I'm seeing that it's not in the fund, so I'm assuming.
It hasn't been funded yet.
Right, but it had more than fifty thousand in it when we went into the year, at least that was what the note said at the time.
Yeah, I haven't taken any money out of road preservation all summer because we left that in there for fifty grand for, I haven't taken.
I know, we haven't put the fifty grand in yet.
So, if, if this. So if, if there's money out of road preservation this summer, someone else is taking it out other than me.
Yeah, I have to check with Wendy, but I don't think so.
Which line is road preservation?
It's not on this one.
So what are we talking?
It's in our trust fund, these are the current balances.
That's what I need to say, okay, thank you.
It's all like the.
I haven't used any money out of the road preservation this summer.
So what was put in it at the beginning of the year?
Nothing.
Nothing.
We, we've, we typically fund them at the end of the year.
Okay.
Um, and there's.
That's why we wanted.
Thirty-eight.
So there wasn't money put in, and how could he take money out of it, I guess?
Money left over from last year because them, them funds, them funds I don't lose at the end of the year.
I got you, okay.
Them two funds that they set up.
They're incumbent, they're incumbent.
Yes.
Okay, just asking.
Yeah.
Just trying to figure it out.
So. Well, that's how you learn.
That's right.
I'm still learning.
Me too.
So the road preservation fund listed. At the New Year's of twenty twenty-four, twelve thirty-one was listed as having a hundred and thirty-six. Four thirty-six, and this must, then I must not have updated something in the spreadsheet. Cause going from that to the thirty-eight, thirty-nine and.
I would have to check.
I think that's gotta be a year old.
Yeah.
The only thing, the only thing that I've used this summer was you gave me, I asked for. For three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for my project last year, you guys gave me two seventy. Uh, for my um, detour road and that's the only money I haven't used any preservation.
What, what was the total cost of that road?
What was it?
Yeah, or have you got to that point where?
Pretty much so. The tile was a hundred and three thousand dollars and we still have to top coat that next year, that's gonna be half of.
Fifty thousand.
Uh, sixty, uh, fifty-five, um, so. That line, I've gone over. Some on that, but I have, I started taking it out of um, highway equipment and labor out of this.
So what, what would you say, what, the tile was a hundred and, you said a hundred and three thousand?
Right, and then I did the bottom.
So would you say the rest is around two hundred?
Yeah, no more than that, and then we added, I added that five hundred feet on in front of bills. Pearson's on Pleasant Street, five hundred feet there, that wasn't included in the project. That wasn't included in the money that I asked for, but I just made it work.
Yeah.
Did you take any of it?
Because it all flows now, if I hadn't done it, it wouldn't have got.
The only thing that got updated was the final total.
Just right in all the right places.
What roads do you have to, uh, that coating I complimented you on on the road to Warner? How many roads do you have? Do you have to do any roads with that?
Yes, we didn't do any this summer because we like to let them sit a year or two afterwards, um, down by Addie's.
I was wondering.
Pleasant Street and, what did I, there was, um, I'd have to go back through my list.
So my suggestion would be, yes, down by Addie's, the way you've done it, you paid.
Yeah, right, down there and um, there was a.
Is this the chip seal you're talking about?
No, and then, and then from the White Plains Road, from. After you go around Mike Borrecks Corner.
Yep.
At well, Chester Hatches, and then where the snowmobiles cross.
Yes.
That's right where the new tile was a year, two years ago, that needs to be chip sealed from there to the town line.
Small portion.
Well, well, it's.
Half the road. Yeah, it's half, it's half the road.
I guess the question would be, how, how much do we actually need then? Because if we were planning on having, and granted, this should probably be suggested by C I P, but. In, in the road preservation fund, if we were expecting to have a hundred K, but that was listed. Uh, last year as expecting to be used for the portion of Pleasant that was done and Franklin Pierce. Uh, in twenty, is for the twenty twenty-six uh, chip seals, but now you're talking about uh, white as well.
Well, something might have to wait a year.
Well, the question is, how much would be needed to do?
Well, I'll have Bruce Davis from Allstate come out and he's gonna give me a quote for all that stuff.
Uh, how, when do you expect him to be out for that?
I can call him, he's, he's on his off season right now.
That would be helpful, cause then we know, then we can allocate, that if you can suggest which one of the three, if we have to. Has to be next year, the least concerning, you, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That makes it easy for us.
Uh, and, and oftentimes there's economies of scale, if you're having to do several at once, so.
Right, because they usually, they um, they usually come out and they don't much come out unless you spend a hundred grand.
Well, roads I think are in pretty good shape and those that need additional attention, I'll use those words. Are things we should keep up to.
Yep.
Is that why they're all in good shape?
Yeah.
And the, the, one of the things that um, if you've gone to any of the courses from uh. U N H extensions or similar for road stuff, one of the things they always hammer on the most is. Your roads are the most expensive asset of the town.
Town.
And the most effective and least expensive way to have good roads. Is to keep your roads staying good, so maintain them, uh, as opposed to having to rebuild them all the time.
No, I agree.
Uh, so ma- making sure that we have the appropriate amount to do the ones that we should be doing. As opposed to, well, we can put it off another year, uh, if we should be doing it, we probably should be doing it. Um, but we need to have all of that information and numbers uh, presented to us and C I P. So that, that can happen, so.
So you can get him out here, get you.
Oh, yeah, I'll call him in the morning.
Yeah, good. That'll be good.
Okay, so, uh, back to. The budget that we were looking at, should any of those numbers change? For example, to move some of the highway to uh, equipment to labor or. Cold patch to supplies and parts or more, for more into signs, like, should any of those be changing? Uh, or, cause they were just rounded numbers as a guess that I threw in there a couple of years ago.
Right, and then, then I guess, um, shim and cold patch, I guess that's. And then that's where I started and then I looked down and I, I mean, I always had, well. Two thousand twenty-four, we had thirty-five hundred dollars in, in for shim and in cold patch. And then last year. There was fifty, so that must have been because of the money that came out of road preservation that you put in there, that went towards that. I mean, all of it.
I don't remember whether it was a specific thing or.
I didn't ask for it, but it's thirty-five hundred dollars in twenty-four.
Right.
And then it's fifty.
So, so that's why I'm asking you to help us rebalance this.
I guess that's what kinda threw me off, I guess I overlooked.
Should these each be in their rebalance state? If your budget's not changing, like, what should each of these numbers be for each of the line items?
I think they're good.
That's enough for shim and cold patch?
Well.
Just asking.
It.
When you say you think they're good, do you mean the fifty thousand that you spent seventeen fifty-two of? Or do you mean the thirty-five hundred and we should put the remaining in some of the other line items?
If you're gonna. I guess I got thrown off because we always did that shim in. Out of road preservation until last year. Always did that out of road preservation, road preservation was shim in your roads, get your roads ready. To chip seal. So you changed that around and I guess that was my error, that that's where the money was coming out of this year instead of. So, I don't know, you, that's something you did.
It's a big enough line item, so you probably should have it for exactly what it is.
Well, fifty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars isn't gonna get you any shim in, I mean, that will shim you.
How much do you need in there?
It, I, I gotta, to do it right. So now we're going back, the other night at the C I P meeting, you guys are gonna get back on track. Because the other night on C I P meeting, you would take, you. Were doing different stuff on where the money was coming from. So you want me to put the money out of that or you taking the money out of the bridge fund?
The, the, the budget is the budget and preservation is supposed to be like. So the budget is supposed to be the stuff that you do all the time every year. Uh, the road preservation fund is for things that you do commonly, but are over multiple years. And the highway uh, fund is for the reconstruction, like, for example, detour and stuff like that.
I don't wanna be rude, Dave, but I, this is my nineteenth year doing this job. And everything worked good and so you took that hundred thousand dollars a year. From road preservation and stuck it in this budget, I don't like it, I never have. It don't belong here, right now, right now, you have put the. Squiball to me, because I, if that money was there, there'd be sixty-nine thousand dollars there, not a hundred and sixty-nine. That other hundred thousand dollars would be where it belongs, I wouldn't be losing it back to the general fund. I'm sorry, I don't like it. I'm not. I didn't like it from day one, I just went along with it. Cause I didn't wanna argue. But it didn't do me any good this year. And you work with me and you help me and you make sure I have the money, but I didn't, it didn't, I don't like how it works. Road preservation, so road preservation is not the general maintenance.
Right, that, that's what we're trying to say. And so the road preservation is those multi-year things like the chip sealing. And so then inside of the budget is all of the standard yearly stuff, so. If this is not the correct mix, please present what is the correct mix and why? So that we can do that.
The correct mix was well, worked real well before we did this. Added that hundred thousand in right out of the. Preservation into the general fund. Because, go ahead, Marlo, you're gonna.
Well, I just, I'm trying to follow kind of like, I, I guess you're saying you were a hundred thousand dollars short.
No, no.
No.
I'm over a hun- I, I have a hundred thousand dollars I haven't spent and fifty of that. Is up here that got put into shim in.
Mm-hmm.
In shim in, where the shim in used to come out of road preservation. Would use the road preservation money to shim the road and then would use the road preservation. To chip seal it.
So if it was over in that spot that you liked it in, what would it change? Do you would have been able to use it?
Right now, I wouldn't have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in my budget, I'd only have sixty-nine thousand dollars in my budget. And I'd be right where I'm supposed to be with my general budget.
So you've got a hundred thousand dollars more than what you normally have?
Well, because he, because, I shouldn't say he, I'm not pointing anything.
He is the board.
He has the board or Dee or who, that, the past board of the board did that and.
So my favorite statement of moving forward, how can we make this happen? So it's in alignment with what we need to do to help you. Get the squareboard, and, and again, Dave has been here, I haven't, but.
Oh, and he has, and he su- and he has supported me and he's always made sure that I've had the money, but I just don't.
Fix it, that's what I'm asking.
Clark, I mean, I, I get it, I, I look at it as, you, to me, some of this is. To be a brand up honest, the shim in the cold patch could have been being done all summer long with the money you had here. So I don't understand how that messed you up, now granted, I'm also gonna tell you, I don't totally get like. I'm not, I'm, I'm a budget person, but I'm not a.
Well, I, I'm kind of, I'm kind of with Marlo too, a little bit.
I just get confused, I mean, I feel your pain, like, you're, you're trying to go along and do your thing and you don't. It, and it's, sometimes it, it does to me seem a little complicated, well, I can make sure I got a little money over here, a little bit of money. I feel like what I'd like to know is, you know these roads better than any of us. Approximately, budgeted wise, hey, listen, I'm gonna need this for this, I'm gonna need this for this, and I'm gonna need this for this.
I gave the C I P's the numbers how many times? To race back in the day, I, every year I go bring numbers.
You mean, you, you mean, you simply say, okay, I need, I'm gonna, the shim in and the cold patching, I have this road, this throwing this road to do. And this is what I need for that, for this, you know, cause you're not gonna do it all, of course.
You can't.
No, but I, I still just get still, I get, I get like both sides, I just get, I'm just, at the end of the day. We sit here in um, November and I say to myself, I can't help it, I say fifty thousand dollars. Warren, if you can't do it, then who can get out there and shim? Emmett, Emmett being the road agent of Webster, I need, let's say, Winnebago chimed, I need this, granted, I know you gotta fix it. I'm just using roads like you stuffed up my head, um, Little Hill chimed and um, you know. Call Road chimed, you know what I mean?
Before you shim them, you gotta ditch them, you gotta change the pipes, you're not gonna, you're not gonna shim a road with bad pipes underneath it.
No, but okay, so that I can, I can, the only thing I do know for sure is you did the new piping, like, I'll use the example, Winnebago Road. I don't know, even know what that would cost to shim it, to be honest with you.
You didn't, you, you wouldn't shim that, you'd have to start all over.
Oh, that one would be shit.
Shim, you can shim Collins Drive and you can shim the other part of Lake Road. But I'm not gonna shim them two sections, I'm gonna do it all at once when it's all ready to go.
Did do a portion of Winnebago Road at some point, right?
Winnebago Road's over here, that's uh.
Sorry, don't Winnebago, I mean, uh. I'm brain dead, the, the road to Warner.
Uh, White Plains.
White Plains, you did a section, and you did exactly what you said.
Well, I did what I had money for, I had so much money, so I went so far.
But you did the process, Em.
Correct.
When, when was that?
Last year, last year.
Okay, so last year, not this year.
Right, last year, yeah. He did the culverts and he, and.
Anyways, how can we move forward with this, cause I, I, I'm not gonna keep beating a dog.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to get going and decide what we're gonna do next instead of just arguing with everybody.
Things alone for next year, I'll make it all work, whatevers. I'll encumber that fifty thousand dollars.
Well, cause you're gonna spend your, your salt.
Yeah, that's gonna be gone after we get done.
We, we, we bought some radios, we got rid of that line, um, highway equipment, you got forty-two thousand, what are we doing to get that spent? Or are you gonna encumber that?
Well, I don't know how, I don't know about encumber that.
But that's actually a hundred with the waiver.
That's also gonna depend on, you know, how much you.
Right, between now, I mean, we still have a month.
True.
Then, then at the end of the year.
We get it.
Then at the end of the year, if there is money left in them two lines. I'm gonna come back to you select board members and you can be thinking about that. A year, it was less than a year ago, Dee was here, I talked to you about making some material down to the pet town pit at the, on the dump road. Doing some blasting and um, making some material there, if I have money left over, that's. I'm gonna look into that and see if I can encumber some of that to make material there at the pit.
So it makes you feel, does that help you?
Yeah.
Marlo?
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, I guess it's better than being negative.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be negative.
No, no, I, no.
Down on anybody, but I.
I wasn't, I actually wasn't saying that, I said it's better than this all in the red.
Oh.
That's my point.
You, you've got one of the biggest budgets in town, you have the biggest budget in town.
I do.
And, and I'm not, I'm not.
And I don't, I, 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 I.
Tried very hard.
I spend it, I, I make it, I make it.
But to be supportive, we just need to know the.
Right, well, that's what I said earlier, if we just do the same as we did, I can live with it. Because I didn't spend this this year, I can't ask for more for next year if I didn't spend this.
But you can get out and do that shimmy next year, you have.
Yeah, I'll get that encumbered, I'll get some, I'll get some numbers. I'll get some, I'll get some numbers from Bruce Davis from Allstate Asphalt for your chip sealing. And I will get some numbers on some shimmin'. But um. We good?
Yep.
I, I guess we'll just fill the same numbers in. I was hoping they would be more accurate for the coming year. Even if they were the same bottom line, but uh, I guess that's what it is.
So talk to me then Dave, because I wanna work with you. I.
So.
You can change all the numbers you want around, but at the very end of the, end of the day, as long as I don't go over my total budget at the very end, it.
Correct.
It doesn't matter, well, it does and it doesn't, if I buy all gravel or all tar.
Well, so I see your point and I agree with you when you're making exceptions in, in a budget area to cover a blown out road or something like that because of a storm or something. The, and that's one of the reasons why putting more into a budget allows for uh, more flexibility. Cause things can be moved from line items even outside of that section of the budget. And it also increases things like the contingency fund, so there's more to put towards that theoretical blown out road. Uh, which we didn't have that in place when the last one happened.
Right, and we were lucky not to have one this summer.
Right, so, that's one of those things where, when we're looking at this and, you know, highway equipment, labor, shim, cold patch. Like you're saying, yeah, the fifty thousand is, like, that doesn't make sense.
Well, it did.
So what I want to see is you to present us numbers for each of these line items. That if you wanna keep the same bottom line budget, that's perfectly fine. But I wanna see you present the numbers of what, what you think each line, line item should be and then just tell us why.
Fifty grand is a good number for shimmin' each year. It, it really does help. But I guess I got kinda confused where twenty-four, it was fif- it was thirty-five hundred dollars and then the next year it was fif- fifty thousand. I didn't jump that up like that. I don't believe I asked for that to happen.
Well, nobody's pointing, pointing a finger.
No, 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 and I'm just trying to figure that out, who, who.
Here's, I, I'm with Dave, supportively with Dave, but I'm also supportive of you. And I think what we're trying to say is, we need more clarification. And not necessarily this year, but as we move on, what I'd offer you is, now that you get time to start planning and thinking for the next year, I would look at it from a one to three to five year plan, cause there are some things in that first year, like you've said, you can't get done this year. So between one and three years, these are some of the items I can do next year, because they're not as important to get done this year. And I'm not trying to sound like I'm trying to simplify this, I'm not trying to play simple natty, I'm just saying that if you could have a plan that you could come to us with, so we could.
But I've had a plan all along.
But it needs to be written sometimes. I, 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 hey, I'm new, I'm just, I'm just suggesting.
I, I, I'm gonna pull John's, John's favorite line here, because I know it's what John loves. John would love to see a memo with that outlined.
Right, I would. Cause I, I would more, you know, you.
Cause he always asks everybody.
You do a great job with it, okay? But you know what you're doing. You want the truth? I know probably fifty percent of what you're doing and I need to know totally what you're doing so I can support you. And I think Milo's in the same boat.
Yeah.
Correct me if.
Well, she knows what I'm doing.
Well, I don't know, she does.
Oh, yeah. She feels.
Let Milo answer for that. Do you know what he's doing?
Well, I just, I, this one.
Not trying to put you on the screen.
No, 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 this one.
Oh, she, she, I've got her confused on, on all this, but when it comes to building roads.
Cause nothing until it's in writing, there are nothing until it's in writing.
They know what you're doing. They've got a nice job.
Let me finish. Emmett, nothing until it's in writing actually happens. You can say it does, not you, anybody, the fire chief, the police chief, the library, until it's in a budget and written and explained, we're sitting here like, okay. And then when we get questioned on it, well, what's happening on that road? You, you know what I'm saying? And I'm not, I'm not trying to be a jerk here, I'm just saying to you that clarification means justification.
Right, but Pleasant Street, I've got a plan for that, that's in the CIP. Lake Road, I've got a plan for that, that should be in the CIP. Little Hill, I've got a plan for that.
A written plan.
Huh?
A written plan.
We have the budget numbers.
A written plan as to what needs to be done.
I.
For the CIP.
I think it has a brief.
A brief summary?
A brief summary with a number.
Well, if you're gonna do all this, then we're gonna hire a secretary.
I think we're.
Cause I'm not a secretary.
I'm not saying you are a secretary. But keep in mind, I've said, well, you've said several times myself, and I had to put a budget together and explain what I was doing. And I had to do it in a narrative to explain to people. Cause I would get scrutinized just like you're being scrutinized on a state level. And that's not a lot of fun. When you got a guy and there's a lot more than you and I do about numbers, sitting there asking you why you're doing something. So I'm just saying, I've had that pain and that's all.
I don't even know if we're really scrutinizing, we're just trying to make sure we can.
We're just trying to put these accurate numbers.
But I know what you're saying, you know, I mean, I could ask that.
Right, put the right numbers together, having the money that I need, getting the work done and working together.
And the expectations of what you hope to get done that year, and yes, it's an explanation, but you know, right down to, you know, sometimes coal patching, shimming.
Give me a week.
And I, once again, I'm gonna mention.
It doesn't even have to be like, it's just like, hey, um, this much, thousand feet of this road is A and I want, I need approximately that for that thousand feet. That's, I don't feel like, you know what I mean? And I know things change, but.
Last I knew, the CIP told me, well, maybe not in my regular budget, so the CIP only tell me what roads I'm gonna spend money on out of the, how?
Construction.
Construction, okay. So on the.
Cause I'm as confused as you are with what you're saying in this round.
And that, and that's part of why bringing everything into the budget gives you more autonomy over everything.
Alright, well, maybe that's where I got off, where I got misled and maybe that's my error. So CIP, when we do money to do a complete construction job, then they say, we're going on Lake Road. Or I tell them, let's go to Lake Road or, or give them three options like I have.
Mm-hmm.
And then they do that, but when it comes to road preservation and all that other stuff, then they have no, I work with you folks with that, that, okay, alright, well, maybe.
Gosh, clarification.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm just, I mean, you're sitting there and you're talking and I go, well, yeah, yeah, that, yeah, but then, but then, yeah, and then, and just want to have, so that like.
Slap me.
No, I just, I'm, I was a little confused with you and then frustrated all at the same time, to be honest with you, because, because, yes, I agree. I, me and Clark sat there, well, that's what I'm, blah, blah, blah. Yes, and I should probably know exactly where that money comes from. And then you have this money. And then I, I've seen some roads, I'm like, oh, well, you might have run out of money or you didn't have time or whatever, but it just be nice to know what your plan is and more or less CIP is for your big projects.
Okay.
Not your preservation.
The other point factor is, truthfully spoken, I think, is you also have, you're down one very competent person who could do some or all of the above for you, where you're doing something else on the roads, right?
Correct.
Right? So I mean, that's maybe something we're not seeing too.
Well, and, and we all understand it and we all live it.
Yeah, everybody's living it.
Nobody's pointing finger at you.
But I didn't spend the money on waste and come back and say it's gone.
No, we know you're not gonna do that, so that's, that's.
We're just trying to be supportive and understand what you need to do. You explain it, but sometimes it becomes confusing.
And sometimes I don't explain things.
No, I'm not being critical of you at all.
I'll be the first one to admit it.
I'm just saying, sometimes we get asked questions that we can't explain, so. I wanna be able to clearly explain from a radio, it's on some road with some company, doing whatever you're gonna do, so.
Well, when somebody's giving you heck because you're using the town backhoe on a private job because they think it's a town backhoe and you're getting your.
Well, that's.
We never said that this was fun.
Alright, well, thank you.
You might wanna put Emmett's property on the side.
And you're gonna say to them.
You're gonna get criticized no matter what you do, right?
No, you know what I say?
You must have learned that in seventeen years, right?
License plate, don't slap the GO.
Right. That's a good thing to tell them.
We do, we do have a couple things that are telling, but not much.
You were gonna trench another in some, in front of another property too. Did you get that trenched yet?
Clark.
What, what, did I forget?
I don't think he was here for that.
Well, it was, it was part of that meeting.
I don't think you're here.
One of the things about doing that is that opens up another canvas, so we're gonna put the, the unfortunate officer on.
Alright, we got, we got the.
Oh, yeah.
I don't wanna get into worse legal liability for the town, but it's a fun idea, it's a fun idea.
Town road. Did you see his palate fence?
No, I had to get.
Yeah.
But Dana talked me off the cliff on that one.
Well, it's a town road.
I'll tell you about it later, Emmett.
You know what I told Russell?
Which Russell? That's fine, are you Russell? Okay, I get confused with that.
You know what I told Russell? I had bigger fish to fry.
Oh, isn't that somewhat the truth? Cause every day we just say which fish to fry.
More budget things.
Alright, well, I'll, I'll follow through, I'll have some more stuff in a couple of weeks.
Well, the other thing I wanna mention is we got that map a while ago from Vince with the road conditions. And if we can get prices to the section of the roads, remember when we had the kid from Central New Hampshire?
The young man, not a kid, don't call him a kid.
Okay, the young man. The young man. We have him give us the condition on the roads. If we can get prices on what you think needs to be done on those sections, then maybe we can prioritize them.
Okay.
And then we can just have that for the board, it's like.
Kinda like a starting, a starting plan.
Yeah. When did that come?
That was a while ago, that was like.
Yeah, cause he, he.
Two, a year, two years ago?
Yeah, I mean.
So it would need to be updated, but they're willing to work with us anytime.
Sure.
For free. That's a free secretary.
That's your administrative assistant, okay.
Yeah, good luck with that.
I should tell the tax payer funded.
Tax payer funded.
Right, yeah, yeah, nothing for free.
Have a good night, Emmett.
Thank you.
David, we had enough points at the, at the farm store, he says, I got a free bag of, of, talk to him. I looked right at him like, snotty and snotty, I'm like, how do you know nothing for free? And he's like, he says, you just took all my fun.
So what else do we need to do to get?
We got like two budget ones. We have insurances and personnel administrations and personnel administrations. I thought it would be salaries, but no, it's a fancy name for. It's a, it's a fancy name for.
Which code is this?
So insurance is the one right after the road agent. That's why I'm gonna go with that one back.
Sorry, Milo, what did I mean?
You're fine. You are fine. Dean, are you leaving us? We, you don't wanna talk about insurance? Okay.
Insurance is, this is just the number of Primexes.
Take care of it.
Yeah.
The increased reliability insurance, workers comp, unemployment, short-term.
Numbers you can't change.
Yeah, that's basically it.
That's right.
And then personnel administration is the one right before the highways and streets. And Dana didn't put any changes for the series keeping. And that's for town portions of bike and Medicare. Is that because they don't change or because we were well clear of it or because we just don't have any numbers yet? I would have to talk to Dana about that one and I'll call him on the phone. Come tomorrow.
Okay.
But that's basically that. And then we have signing of documents and motioning approvals. And we have quite a few documents to sign major.
Can't get your book away from me.
Yes, you may have my white book. Cause it was about to go somewhere else.
I thought Dana would have made it even easier on himself and given him the different one and then not labeled the other dude.
Oh, you'll have to give him crap when he gets back. Well, he just, no, so I like to be special.
He does.
In my mind.
Being that we've now had presentations from all of the.
Departments.
Departments.
Yes.
Probably should do a budget workshop at some point. If at this point, everybody got it as we expected, uh, we would be down hmm, fifty, no, that's not right, cause this one still is empty and it shouldn't be. Oh, cause they said just kind of use it and didn't give us the dedicated numbers. And we don't have transfer station yet.
Well, that's what he's talking about.
But that was.
Right, is that solid base of your line?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. So that was the. I'm not gonna ask her about that tomorrow. Expect about eighty-something that they said.
Transfer station income to us?
We do get some income, income to offset the bill, but I think.
I mean, do we have a discussion with them again or we?
We are gonna end up having a discussion with them again. I don't know if it'll be before the end of the year, cause we said, their town administrator would get a hold of us if they need.
Cause that, that, that gate issue, I, I, I can understand that, but.
I'm with you on that one. You could just pay somebody to check stickers.
Find a retiree who wants to go over there and spend twenty, twenty-four hours a week.
Better yet, do what every other town does in state of New Hampshire, it's, you get a dump sticker every year.
And two, yes.
And that amount you pay for the dump sticker offsets the amount paid for the person.
I have a question. I know we talked about it and I can't believe I can't remember. I wanna ask Mary and I'm sure she's right. But if, like in my household, we have all company vehicles, so that means I can't get a dump sticker.
I don't think that's necessarily true.
Well, that's what I, cause I know we talked about that, cause.
So here's the thing, Webster's a weird animal. The last town I worked for, if you.
Yeah, but we talked about that, but it's in Hawkington and I just can't remember. I thought for sure, cause there's lots of people in Hawkington that have a town truck.
So you pay the fee and they give you how many stickers you need? Five, six, eight, ten?
Yeah, but because my cars aren't registered in this town, I can't get a dump sticker.
But you live in Haw- live in Webster?
I know.
Well, you should be able, but that's, if you have to me explain that to me, guess what? Let's make this simple. Here's a dump sticker, you live in Webster. Do you see my point? I mean, why make that complicated?
That's why I was getting, there's a different way of.
Don't do me wrong, I might try that. I remind you, I'm just, you know.
No, no.
Sales handled it as that would be like a minor home business, but they didn't have the same thing we did. You just get a minor home business permit for like twenty bucks.
No, and I understand that, but we had that conversation with Hawkington and I was sitting right there, I just can't remember. You can't remember? More or less, I do not have a car at my house that is registered, a pickup registered to the town dumpster. So I was told I can't.
You mean to you as in.
Yeah, so I cannot have a dump sticker, cause I.
I, I would, yeah. I, yeah, there, there, there was a discussion about that, but the, it was.
We, I remember this, Hawkington would have the same problem.
I think the way that it came down was that because it's a company truck, it shouldn't have a personal thing because companies are not allowed to do dumping, it's only persons, and so you couldn't get a dump sticker for it. However, because you are a resident, you can show up driving said truck and saying, this is my personal trash. Show that you are a resident and you'd be fine. I, I wouldn't see, like, if you were gonna bring your ten-town dump truck to the transfer station, that would be a hell no. But if you have a pickup truck registered in your name.
It, it shouldn't even matter. I could, I, I just.
Because it's the same thing.
Because, because it's coming from my facility, my house, not, not from my business, my house. My business just doesn't happen to be in Webster, it's in Hattler. And actually, I have my own dumpster at home, but like, I, I'm demoing something, right, at my house. I have no way to get it to the dump.
Right, but that's. Like, I've got a pickup truck that's not, that doesn't have a sticker. Because I almost never take it to the dump and I don't plan to, but if I need to demo something and fill the back, I show up and show my ID that shows that I'm a Webster resident. And don't you have to get a demo sticker like a bulky or something? Well, then. Cause you're doing a lot of demolition debris and it's a separate charge for the demo debris? Well, if, if you were doing it with demo, do it by weight and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, you'll get a truck, but I meant, you won't, but I'm not, otherwise you shouldn't be allowed to go in there with it.
Is we allow non-residents to get dump stickers provided they're property owners, cause you have C-zone people that come here and live. And their house, lakes on the house, and they can still get a dump sticker, they just have to show their property bill, their current property tax, but the most recent, they pay property tax. When, when we talk to them about fees and what things are supposed to be after the new contracts and stuff.
Yeah, can you remember that?
You should bring that up.
Yeah, don't let me forget. But I know we talked about, that's what I'm so frustrated, you remember everything. What is wrong with you?
We have to sign documents and we have to approve stuff. So if things go as.
It really comes down to, my kid just bought a place that he's purchasing in Webster and gonna be living there and he wants to do some demoing and he's got no way to get rid of the demo, according, unless I'm misunderstanding, which it sounds like I am, so I'll just tell him, bring here, you're.
He can bring any vehicle he wants showing that he is a current resident.
Back.
And there should be no reason why a Webster resident who comes here on dump day and wearing Mary's clothes should be able to go to Hawkington to get a transfer sticker. I don't see what the point of that is, why they have to come to see Mary. I, I still.
Well, we're gonna break that few.
Cause that's the way that the towns did it because. Cause that's the way that the towns did it, because it used to be revenue. But anyway, so the summary right now, just briefly looking at what we think is going to be there for the budgets that everybody's presented, is up approximately a hundred twenty thousand, which is six point six percent. That is the budget portion, that is not overall, and we often have a budget go up or a budget go down, and then the funds do the opposite. So, that is not something to be worried about yet, but that is where we currently are, we will need to at some point have a budget work session to go through the stuff in more detail. We also still haven't talked about salaries for employees yet, so.
Right. I, I thought that was supposed to go the other way this year.
Well, I'm waiting for you to get your phone call from somebody.
Well, we'd be sad if we didn't.
Well, John hasn't gotten it yet, so it'll be his first. So that's where that is, what, uh.
That's my phone's enlisted.
Okay. And then we have to do the motion to approve the minutes.
Uh, yes, minutes. We could do that while we're signing, Cameron.
Yep.
Yep, so the first one's for Dave, this is the contract to revise, you asked me to make sure if we get the guarantee for four years on the contract for the fee, I've got them put right on the purchase and sales agreement that it's locked in for four years.
Whittling the pencil seemed to work on this, didn't it?
It did.
Don't I felt that needing to know?
I have, it is the same one. Two fifteen, yes, they're the same intent, I don't know, I have two of them. But. Just for the sake of everything being the same contact person and that this says authorized individual.
Who's this for?
That's Chuck Rose, Joe. Just the one for the owner. I would move to make our current contact. Edward Clowson. I would move to make our current contact person, who has been Russell Tatro, the authorized signee for the revised contract and revise agreements going forward.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go, Russ, you can take care of that. Cause you'll be here, I may not be after much. The last one was the health insurances, this is your confirmation of the new rates for health insurance.
Okay, is there anything we need to sign here?
That's just Dave's gotta sign that one.
Dave's gotta sign that one.
Why is it all just me? Cause there's only one signature on it. On the other chair.
Is that it?
That's it?
Good.
There is the. And it's in the back.
I've been going since four thirty, so. We don't have any closed sessions tonight?
Unless you guys need one.
No, it's just Dave's.
Oh man, what am I gonna do, Dana doesn't take these and then give them immediately back to me downstairs, that's all right. Then we have, next, this is just a handout.
Oh, one night, this is all.
Yes, that was just a handout to us. That was just a handout, you already signed the other one. Perfect. I just thought you really didn't get a chance to look at it, so I might bring it to you, you know, I'll take a deeper look. Okay, uh, yeah, and so it's just minutes, right? Yep. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes?
Yeah, it looks.
Look good.
Nicely written, how about you, Dave?
The minutes were there. Well, we have one public and two non-public, so. This was. And that's my food pantry. And then everybody's stuff.
Really good here.
I'll try to be good, don't know if I always succeed, but I try. Um, yes. Yeah. Okay. And then we might wanna seal one of them. Don't we have to do that within X period of time after having the non-public? I believe so, but we're not within that timeframe, it's only been less than a week since we had that meeting. I thought it was like twenty-four or forty-eight hours. Yeah, it's more than twenty-four or forty-eight hours. Okay. So then I would move to accept the meeting minutes as written and seal the non-public, uh, meeting minutes from November third.
I second that.
We heard in legal.
I second that.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. We probably should've just sealed it when we came out of it, but. Yeah.
Did you miss that?
We don't have the.
We were just trying to. I don't think it was. Where was it wrong?
All right.
I see we don't have plan.
Close this down.
No, not until the first weekend of summer, the last thing before I forget, we should mention, is because next week's my vacation and the meeting, the next select board meeting is immediately after my vacation, I won't have time to put together a packet, because Dana's out, so.
Really? How exciting is the packet for when, when you're gone? I mean, you could already probably put the agenda together.
How about just an agenda?
Yeah. I, I think we should still just have the meeting and not worry about. And we'll just call it budget, and if anything pressing happens, I'll let Wendy and then, to let me know on Wednesday, and then they'll. I mean, we, we can always just write an item in when we get here, it's fine. Okay, I just, I didn't have time to do it, if I'm not here at my office. Right.
I have a blank one of those.
Here, blank budget, stuff to be determined, TBD. Okay, uh, anything else that we need to?
No, that was a good meeting.
All right, I would, oh, it's nowhere near as late as I thought it was. Uh, I would move to exit the, and close the meeting at eight thirty-two.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Goodbye.
Have a good night's sleep.
Thank you.
I did feel like.
Clark, I was three thirty.
It feels a lot later.